Okay, welcome to the February 25th regular school committee meeting of the Nishoba Regional School District. Calling the meeting to order at six o'clock, or five o'clock, I apologize, five o'clock. Tonight we have a jam-packed agenda. We're gonna be going into an executive session after citizens comments and Tom gives us our student report. And then we'll be back in this room for the remainder of our meeting. So, the first item on the agenda is citizens comments. Do we have any citizens comments? Yes. Can you tell us your name and your town? And come on up.
Do you mind if I sit down?
You may sit down, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm short, so you can look over me. Hi, my name is Trisha Pashak. I know many of you already and I'm from Bolton, Massachusetts, just in case you don't know. So, I am on here on behalf of NIFE, Nishoba Food Allergy Education and Awareness. And I know that some of the members have reached out to you, Maureen, in terms of some things that you would consider because we noticed that the food budget is on the agenda. And we have some ideas that you kind of wanna share with you in hopes that you can consider that as maybe an embark in that. One thing that we wanna put a shout out is Tom Hul, the director. We've been talking to him about having more food allergen friendly, in particular soy milk. And he's been really helpful and accommodating in actually getting that product across the district. And just to jump on that, you know, obviously you know that eating in the school cafeteria is really stressful for some of these kids. It's sort of this black hole and because it's not just about the food, but it could be hidden ingredients or cross-contact that unintentionally may be served within the cafeteria. So, we have identified through all the work that we've done that the food service staff is part of the allergy team. And they ensure the safety and inclusion of kids with food allergies. Our goal is for the food staff members to reduce the risk of exposure and also allow the students to feel included in their school dining experience. The student with food allergies may have in the past took chances with what they're eating in the cafeteria, pestered food service staff about ingredients, or just choose to skip eating in the cafeteria altogether. So, what we're trying to do is, you know, have a little bit more transparency, open communications, and give some suggestions to make it better for these individuals. And part of that is for the school district to consider streamlining a number of areas to assist all stakeholders. So, I'm not just talking about food service, talk about parents and students and teachers as well. In all aspects of child, be able to eat safe meals within a dining area with minimal anxiety. So, some of these requests may need additional, or may be consideration in that food budget. So, that's why we're bringing this up. So, the first thing is selective food staff members be included in 504 and IHCP meetings of the student that has been identified as needing assistance with food allergy. It puts a name to the face. It opens communication with these different individuals so that if they have a question, that the parent doesn't have to do it for them, that they can, they know immediately who they can reach out. The other thing is that the food service director require food service providers to disclose the top eight allergens in manufacturing process, ingredients, and facility cross-contact information. When a parent, because that right now is not online, so a parent tried to call each of these companies for this information and they were met with varying mix of responses. So, some of these questions may be better, may get better results if it came from the school district employee. And that if this information was posted online and updated by annually. Also, one big thing is including several products from a vetted allergen free vendor such as Enjoy Life or Skinny Pop. I know my daughter forgets her lunch and a lot of the food she can't eat. She's gonna be going to high school soon, you know, she might need a snack for, you know, sports afterwards. So, sometimes if there's these go-tos, just two or three of them that are into the cafeteria district ride, that would be really helpful for these students. And when I say vetted, there are some companies that will put, like if things were manufactured, if allergens were manufactured on equipment, they're transparent terms of cross-contact and things of that nature. So, we know that these are safe allergen-friendly foods. Also, one thing that we would like to see is parent and student cafeteria orientation in which they're invited into the cafeteria to meet the staff and for them to show how they safely handle food prep to reduce anxiety. So, maybe that could be in the beginning of the year, especially with kindergarten orientation. That would be an easy thing, but also if they could just open up their doors so for these kids to make a relationship with them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much, and we'll defer-
Trisha, can you follow?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Bates will take it under advisement and work with his staff.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much for coming in. Any other citizens comments tonight? No? Okay. Tom, you're up.
So, cafeteria, like you said, I noticed there was soy milk this week and there was different types of milks and everything.
Great timing.
Just that reminded me, I was just seeing in lunch, because I, every day for lunch, all I do is buy two milks and I bring my lunch. Otherwise, and I noticed that there's something different there displayed this week. In sports, it's been big, all the state competitions have been going on. The week before vacation, we had the divisional track state meet, so that was track in Nishoba's Division Four. So, we had our teams go there where we had eight boys and eight girls both go. And a lot of big successes, our miler for the boys won, two miler, I think either won or came in second. Just great all-around performances, couple of the girls, like one, a couple of the girls got three medals, two medals. It was a great performance up there. So, a bunch of them went on to the overall state meet, which is where you have all the divisions, D1, D2, D3, D4 go on and they had good success there too. The ski team had their state meet last week or the week before and they had a really great time there. The boys' basketball team won the Clark Tournament, which is a big deal. They haven't won that for a really long time. So, they've been having a really good season so far. Spring sports will be starting up, March 21st, I think is when tryouts for all the sports start. So, they've been having sign-ups for that and with all the spring sports, they're getting closer. They've been having the winter workouts where we'll go and the teams will get together and organize some stuff. I know baseball, softball does that. I've seen lacrosse going out there on the turf or in the gyms getting ready. This weekend, we have the Moody's Math Tournament, which is for the math team. And it's like a marathon of math. It's 14 hours. And so, we'll go and they'll give you one problem to work on. Last year was based off of STEM fields and it was, you were supposed to mathematically model how STEM compares to other majors, whether it's still worth it to go to college because of all the debt, the job satisfaction, everything like that. So, you have to model all that with math. So, that will be coming up this weekend. The build season for robotics is over, so they've, so they finished the robot, not finish it, they'll make changes later, but they've officially stopped building the robot for now until their next turn, until their first competition. So, they've been working hard on that. They stay there till all hours. And I know over vacation, it was just, they were there, they'd get there at whatever time in the morning and leave midnight and be working on it. All those guys love it. They spend so much time on it. So, they're getting ready for their first competition. The spring play will also be coming up in a couple of weeks, I think that's in March. They're doing the Addams Family this year. And also with APs coming up soon in a couple of months, the AP registration is this Friday, so that's also going on at school.
What's going on with the band?
The band, we have MICA in March and I think, when is it? I think it's like, not April 1st, must be March 1st. We're having the old conductor from Concord Carlisle come in and he used to be a MICA judge or is a MICA judge. And he'll, he comes in and gives us critiques and talks to us about how he performed and so. And the jazz band has MAJE coming up, which is their same as the jazz version of MICA. So, they'll have that Massachusetts Jazz Ensemble or Festival, something like that. And so, they have that coming up too.
You almost forgot the band, didn't you?
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. Does anybody have any questions for Tom?
No.
No?
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. At this point in the agenda, we're gonna step away and go into executive session. So, I'm gonna ask all of our guests if you wouldn't mind to step outside. And as soon as we're done, we'll have you come right back in, okay? Thank you so much. And I think we need to do, I need a motion and a roll call on this.
Thanks so much, Tom.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining to include Dr. Kurt Bates, George King, and Alita Masterson to open back up into regular session at the conclusion of the executive session.
We have a second?
Second.
And a roll call. Kathy Tier.
Hi.
Mark Jones.
Hi.
I'm a yes. Nicole?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
And Neil?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, thanks everyone. Appreciate your patience with us. We're now going to return to the regular portion of our meeting. And the next item of business is, hello, the next item of business is new business. And the superintendent search screening committee lotteries. So, as you all know, tonight is the night when we will be having our selection for the representation from parents. One from each of our three member towns, Bolton, Stowe, and Lancaster. And also the community at large member on our superintendent screening committee. And the community at large member is one person selected from any of the three towns. I'm gonna ask Alita to help us with this because she's been coordinating and gathering up all of the letters of interest. I did see the letters of interest and we, we have some, a field of really interesting, passionate, impressive folks who have, some of them have experience in education, some of them have experience in the corporate world. Some of them are just parents that have been really devoted and involved in the district. So, thank you to everyone who has sent in a letter of interest. Unfortunately, in order to keep the field of the screening committee to an appropriate manageable number, we can't accept everyone. So, Alita, do you want to tell us how many folks from each town?
There's five letters from the town of Bolton. There's only one from Lancaster, so there's obviously no lottery. There were seven from Stowe and only one specifically asked to be community member at large.
Okay, so who is the, who will be our Stowe, our Lancaster representative since there was only one person that sent a letter of interest?
Paula Castner.
Okay, so Paula Castner is a parent in Lancaster and she will be our Lancaster representative. And then, do you wanna do?
Maureen Bush was the only one that sent in one specifically asking for community member at large.
All right, so Maureen Bush is our community member at large, a Stowe representative. And you wanna do Bolton?
Oh, Herb Cabral.
Herb Cabral, raise your hand. He's the only gentleman in the audience. Hi, Herb. Herb's from Bolton. Thank you so much for offering to serve. And now the Stowe representative.
I'm just going to verify, just to keep it all on board, that the other four names were also in the envelope. They weren't, they didn't all say Herb, did it?
They were.
This is Stowe. Claudia Druege? Claudia Druege, yep.
Caught, I was saying, Druege?
Druege.
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 Druege. Claudia, so sorry for doing that to your last name. Claudia is our Stowe representative. So, Claudia Druege, if I've, hope I pronounced that correctly, from Stowe. Paula Castner from Lancaster and Herb Cabral from Bolton are our parent representatives. Thank you and congratulations. And Maureen Bush is our community at large representative from Stowe. And Alita, will you, well, one of us will send an email to let them know that they've been selected. And yeah, and so, Dr. Bates is gonna share with us his selection for the teachers, one from each school?
Not teachers, unions doing that, yeah.
Principal?
Principal, uh-
Central office.
Central office and town managers.
And town managers, okay.
So, the central office will be Tracy Conti, special ed. Principal would be Laura Friend and town manager will be Don Loeb.
All right, thank you so much. You'll be hearing from one of us really soon because things are starting to rev up, okay? Thanks, everybody. Okay, the next item of business is the bus contract. And George, I think that's yours.
Yes, like a vote of authorization from the school committee to authorize us to notify first student that we are exercising our option year on the bus contract, which would keep the contract in place for one more year at 4%. It's our last option year.
So, we need a motion or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Any discussion?
Does anybody, yeah, we can discuss.
What is it? We have a?
There's nothing in my-
There isn't anything in there. It's just exercising that one here.
Just a motion to exercise our final year option for our yellow bus transportation contract.
And actually, to the, to just to support what George just said, I got a phone call from one of the school committee reps in Ashland and she told me that they're doing the same thing, for the same reason.
The marketplace is not good.
Yeah, that's what she said. So.
What's the name of the bus company?
Is it First Student?
First Student, yes.
And we got no interest either, right?
No, I think part of that is because everything new, we're sitting on a 4% option, so they, one of those schools, they're pricing, I suspect. Because I think if they thought they could beat it, they probably would, would have beat it. But I think no one could have beat it, something, since they knew we were sitting on the option, they just did it. But we did, that's a good point though. We did put it out to bid to see if we could do that.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
I move that we exercise our option with first student for the 16, 17 school year.
Yes.
All right, second. Neil, any conversation? Anybody have any questions? All those in favor? Is that everyone? Unanimous. Thank you. Nipro donation letter to Luther Burbank. Who's got that one? George?
I.
Kirk? Oh.
Okay.
What do you need?
It won't open?
There it is. Donation.
Is it money?
Yes.
Maybe we should we accept it?
The principal, Laura Friend, has, please accept this letter of request to receive a gift donation on behalf of Luther Burbank Middle School. The gift donation, the amount of $500, has been offered to the Luther Burbank Middle School to help defray the cost of AV equipment in the auditorium. The current AV equipment is in the original equipment, is the original equipment that was purchased when the auditorium was constructed in 2002. Much of the equipment is in need of replacement or repair. Specifically, this gift will be used to defray the cost of new microphones and accompanying cables. The purchase of this equipment will help provide better quality sound for the multitude of performances and videotaping opportunities for our students. The gift has been generously offered by Nipro Foundation of Clinton.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept?
No motion.
No, I vote money, but one of the ladies from Microphone, do it?
Kathy?
A motion that we accept the Nipro donation.
In a second. In a second?
Second.
Mark's, Mark's the second.
Mark's the second.
Any, any conversation questions?
No.
Nope, all those in favor? And it's unanimous. Kathy, are you in favor?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Okay.
Is it known how the donation came about, was it solicited or offered? Is there any story that anyone has?
I don't know.
I don't know, but we will be sending a-
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, Dr. Bates will take care of that. Okay. Our next section is, now, the next section is on the FY17 budget. So, as we did last meeting and the meeting before, this meeting, we've got a few folks from our administration who are gonna be sharing their, the work that they're doing now and their plans for next year with regards to the budget. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bates and we'd love to hear what your folks have to say. I wanna remind the school committee that this is a, an opportunity to get clarification on what the budget ask is. We're not looking at building plans, restructuring plans. This is what are you doing? Show us what you're doing and where you wanna go, okay?
Tom? Tom Hul's the coordinator of food services.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, Tom.
Have you all received the copy of the budget that I put together for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. And you wanna go through it by line or how would you like to do this?
No, we don't. In fact, you know what, Tom? I assume that everyone here has, you gave it to us with enough time for us all to review before tonight. So, thank you so much. So, don't feel, please don't feel that you have to go through it.
We can keep this pretty short then. We're, we're looking at, we have a $6,000 increase in cafeteria wages. There's some other, and that's contractual. So, we're looking at approximately, what is it here, the $30,000, $38,000 deficit with the, with the information on the left. The USDA and its fair pricing agreement, or whatever you wanna call it, with the school districts have set the price for school lunch at $2.78 as a minimum pricing next year. We are at $2.75. We have not had an increase in six years. And as much as it pains me, I think we need to look at an increase of 25 cents per meal to get to that minimum of $2.78 and not have to raise our prices again for another several years, hopefully. By doing that, that'll put us, projections will put us about $12,000 in the, in the back. We are currently making some changes within the nutrition program to hopefully spur some new customers and increase our meal counts. We're in the process of, we have bids out for a deli line or a deli unit for the high school. We're also looking, we've done some research and gotten some survey information back and students are really, although we do use a great deal of fresh vegetables, they wanna see even more, so we're gonna bring it to them. We're able to do that because we have some money through the USDA and the DOD Fresh Program, which is the Department of Defense Fresh Program, where some of our allotted allowance for school purchasing goes directly to fresh produce. And so, we're also looking at tabletop, for lack of a better word, salad bar or condiment bars where we can put out more fresh vegetables. And we're also looking to increase some of the served options on a daily basis at the two middle schools. And hopefully, we'll increase some of the participation that we've seen drop off this, this past year. Our past five years have always been significantly profitable. And we hope to get that back with some of the changes with the newer equipment that we're looking to, to bring in.
No, but Tom, I, you know, Tom has done, I feel a good job. I met with him and I've visited the high school cafeteria quite often and the ladies there are always very pleasant and willing to give me cookies. But, you know, and it, I'm very concerned about the drop in, in sales.
Yes. I also hope to be able to spend more time in the actual kitchens themselves. Mandates and bureaucratic paperwork does take a much more time than it ever did in the past. It's getting to be more and more every year. But hopefully, we'll be out in the, or I'll be out in the cafeterias much more to work with the staff to show them some, some new trends because I keep an eye on that. And also, I wanna be able to spend more time actually with the students and get some more feedback from them because they're our largest set of customers next to the teachers and staff.
I have a couple of questions, but before I jump in, does anyone else have any questions? Nicole?
Is the drop in sales across all buildings?
It is. They started coming back though somewhat in all of the schools except the high school in November. So, we're looking, we stabilized since November in all of the schools except the high school.
Have you changed? Kathy, do you have a, wait a minute.
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna, someone I think is asking, what do you think accounted for the drop in the sales?
The only thing I can attribute it to is the change from the middle school students who went into ninth grade and the loss of last year's seniors.
Oh, I see.
But other than that, numbers are pretty much the same, staffing's the same. The biggest thing, there were some changes in the daily structure at the high school with regards to late starts. When students come in at 10:30 in the morning or so, they don't necessarily wanna eat lunch at 11:00 in the morning or buy snacks or anything like that. We also, mid-year last year, last, we had, study halls were in the, in the cafeteria itself. They've been moved down by the auditorium. So, those sales have been lost. But we're also, have out for a quote right now, it's a, it's a merchandising cart. And with that, we'll be able to go down, and we've, I've already discussed it with Dr. Graham. We'll be able to go to the study halls and try to recoup some of those sales. And then also, the goal is to, during lunch periods, set up a separate station with, oh, not a laptop, but another system so we can use the POS system and maybe have a concept station during the four lunch periods to again, not only increase participation, but have another line available for the students.
So, the, the push cart, what are the employees, are they on board with that?
Well, you know, any way we can, we're a self-sufficient program. So, we need to make sure that our sales are there. Otherwise, if we don't have the sales to pay our staff and buy the food, we're all gonna be out of positions or, or work. Our goal is to serve the students. That's part of our job, is to service the students while staying in the block.
So, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. How many, do you know how many students, because I know that you're proposing to go from the $2.75 to the $3 for lunch?
Yes.
How many students can't or don't pay, aren't able to pay? Is that gonna, I'm wondering if there's gonna be an increased burden on families?
How many students receive free or reduced meals?
Um, well, there's the program.
Right.
But then, you must have kids who aren't paying for it. Do you just actively, proactively go out and talk? Okay.
Students are reminded, you know, Johnny, you're running low. We also, the managers send notes, whether it's via email or hard copy, phone call, to parents saying whether or not students have, actually, if students have negative balances. Once it gets over $10 monthly, I do them. And then, if we don't get any response for several cycles, we ask the help of the principals.
And what's, I mean, is that a big population?
No.
Okay.
We usually receive a response pretty quickly.
Okay. And what do we do with, and I know in restaurants, they have, and I'm assuming it's similar, but with the unused food, does it get thrown away at the end of the day or?
Well, unused portions that haven't been out on the line are served. No, tho- those portions are brought down to temperature and handled properly, so to be able to use on another,
Oh, okay.
another day, or turned into something, just for lack of a quick example, if we had chicken patties today, they'd be cooled and stored properly, and then we may have chicken parm two days after with those unused portions. Anything that's been out for over an hour or has been exposed to students, obviously, we wouldn't reuse.
And one more question. I love food, sorry. I have to, I have to ask. So, you've come up with some new innovative things to do to try to, you know, to try to get people more of what they'd like. Do you ever ask the people on the front line who are serving the students what they're hearing or what they think may work?
I do.
And how do you do that? Because I think that, I would, I would think that would be a great value is to, they may know, right? I just wonder.
Well, when they give me examples, I'm happy to hear them. But very often, or not very often, occasionally, they have in their minds how they think things should be. And unfortunately, it may not be the way the trends are showing. So, we can't always listen or can't always take their advice, because what we need to do is, if, if we've done the same thing this year and our numbers haven't gone up, that means something needs to change. So, by doing the same thing and expecting change, that's not going to happen. So, we also, we need to make the changes, whether or not staff sometimes want to or think it's a good idea, because we all know change is a difficult thing.
Well, no, I go, I get the change thing. I'm just wondering if they are able to give you feedback from the students, because they're on the front line.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay.
And I'm on the front line as much as I can be, too. But we've also just recently sent out a survey to all the students and parents in the district. We've gotten over six hundred replies from students and close to a hundred and fifty from parents. And we're also going to have a survey day at the high school, so students can actually come and use a laptop and do it right there.
That's great.
To try to see if we can really encompass what they're looking for. Some of the questions are, you know, why aren't, do you buy meals? If not, why? With options, and what's, what, what would you like to see? What's your favorite restaurant? Things like that, because if it's a quick-serve restaurant or something like that, we may be able to mimic those styles. Because, you know, that's what students like.
Two, two very quick ones.
Sure.
So, thank you, Tom. So, with the student accounts, do they delineate the difference between the grades? And where I'm going with this is freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. So, if there is a drop-off that you had from the outgoing seniors, you should be able to, to run the numbers and find out if the incoming freshmen, and compare that to last year's seniors and see if there's a difference.
I would have to check the power school capability. I'm not sure if that's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, it, it may. The other thing is, how's the waste? Is that maintained the same, the, the amount of waste that takes place, or has that gone up?
Um, you know, we, with the new Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, in order to receive a reimbursement, each meal needs to contain at least a half cup of vegetable or fruit. We keep them by the registers and ask a student, please take your fruit or vegetable on the way out. If they don't, obviously, we have to charge that as an all-the-cap meal. So, it's by piece as opposed to a unit. Sometimes we do find some of those left in the high school primarily, on the, the condiment area or thrown away. But with regard to extra waste or tonnage, I'd have to check with, with Mr. Clary on that, but I haven't seen any extra myself. I think as, this is the second year now of this, students are becoming more realistic or more accepting of it and finding out that the fresh fruits and vegetables that we offer really aren't bad to eat. So, that was the intent. You know, it takes ten-plus times for a student to accept, or a child to accept something new.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
You have, you have a question? Anybody else, Lynn, before you go, I'm going to let, anybody else? And then we can let Tom go after Lynn's question?
Mark does.
Okay, Mark does. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Just a quick question. A little kiosk for the auditorium. Is that a cart? Could you use that? You know, where they, there's a roll-up and they, they set, set up.
Yeah, the problem with that is manning it and then having to keep the food. This particular cart has cooling trays and warming trays. So, the cooling trays, we can cool, the warming trays, we can heat. So, say breakfast sandwiches, whatever, maybe, will still be hot, milk will still be cold, and fruit will still be cold.
Just a place for the, in a roll-up window.
It's not even. It's literally a cart that somebody would stand behind, and there's wells in it with areas underneath to put these units in to keep it hot or cold. And that way, we can just bring it back to the cafeteria, put the things in the refrigerator, in the warmer box to keep them to temperature, and there's no waste of lots of food. I'm sorry?
And that's in your budget?
Yes. No, not in this budget. It's in this, this fiscal year's budget, not this fiscal year.
Oh, and you haven't purchased it yet?
No. No.
You sure you want to? Okay, Mark?
I see that you're suggesting that you might need to hire additional people, and you're saying they're potential people. So, is, is that something you'll just have to figure out as the year progresses to see if you can both afford it and whether you need to?
Yes.
So, just warning, advising us, this is a thing, something you're thinking about and go.
And to see if, right, again, one, can we afford it? Two, how bad do we need it? Three, is there another way, perhaps? But the substitute pay is something that with the increase, it's a potential, because of the amount of sick time, vacation time, and things like that, that the Food and Nutrition Department have made. We could see an increase in substitute pay of approximately ten thousand dollars.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for having me.
Appreciate you coming.
I hope to see you all more often, and I'd like to extend to everybody an invitation to lunch.
Oh, you never sent me that recipe for the chicken salad.
No, I have to get it from Lori yet.
And I just said it in public.
I know, I know. I have to get it from Lori. But anytime, touch base with me. I'd love to show you what we do up close, or feel free to stop by anytime.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Bates?
I'm going to have them get their chairs.
Okay.
Kathy, dear? About six o'clock?
Oh, she just wanted to.
Hi, everyone. It's so good to see you. Thank you for coming to share. Sorry, Dr. Bates, I stepped on your toe. I'm such a control freak.
We've heard a lot about teaching and learning and what they do, who they are, what they do.
Yes.
And how important they are to the district. These coordinators collectively possess a collection of knowledge, talent, skills, ability, experience. And when they put it all together, collectively harness and provide for your school district a very high value of educational knowledge for the administrators, the teachers, the staff, and the students. They represent a form of wealth, which is now being directed to accomplish the goals and supporting and being a resource to the building principals and teaching staff. And the curriculum leaders, in my opinion, are here to ignite the potential and instructional and supervisory staff to provide the challenging and effective educational program. I've gotten to know them pretty well. We've been spending a lot of time together. I think they are unsung heroes who have not had an opportunity to really demonstrate their potential. And my goal is for them to really be able to use that potential in a better way. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in my transition plan, so. Do you know who everybody is?
Why don't you introduce yourselves and what your functional area is?
I'm Martina Kenyon, the STEM coordinator on maternity leave.
Well, thank you for coming, Martina.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, she's listening at this point. But, um, so I'm actually here just to listen and answer any questions as needed, but someone down the line will be.
And I'm Robyn Benoit. I am the interim STEM coordinator in Martina's absence.
Okay.
I'm Cynthia Larson, the digital learning coordinator.
And I'm Patty O'Connor, I'm the ELA coordinator for the district.
Thank you.
Want to start, Robyn?
Oh.
Well, whatever you planned.
Would you like to, you know, I guess the question is, would you like us to go through?
A brief overview of.
Brief.
Brief overview of your role and what you've been doing so far this year and the plans for next year.
So, a brief overview is really, all of us in our collective areas and, and together provide leadership for ongoing development of curriculum within the district, for professional development, for supporting teachers in instruction, for assessment for the district. And we do provide a unique lens of being able to look at what we do pre-K through twelve. We're really the only content specialists within our district that have that lens. That is a very different one than within a singular building. And really, that's kind of the core of what we do. So, for this year, the majority, a lot of my time has been spent supporting our elementary math pilot. And that comes in a number of different ways. And it's not, it goes beyond the data collection and the just observing in classrooms, but also coordinating with both of our programs, making sure that as we're getting feedback from, from teachers, that we're able to provide support from them, for them, from our, our two programs. It also is about networking without, with it outside the district and being able to ask questions about, what are they using, how are they using it, what are we finding, and being able to share that. And I've spent some time collaborating with districts around both programs. And, and a little bit more around the Envision, just because it is a newer program for us that we're not as familiar with. We've been using Everyday Math in the past, so it's not, you know, we're learning more about these other programs. We've been collaborating there. So, as part of that role, I also end up providing informal feedback for teachers at all levels. I've been spending a lot of time this year, particularly in K-five classrooms, but I've also been in middle school classrooms and high school classrooms as needed. And part of that also means that I'm attending vertical team meetings for, particularly for our middle school. I facilitate professional development. I also plan professional, sorry. Plan professional development, kind of in the big picture, collaborating with Cindy and Patty and all, in our content areas and for our elementary, middle, and high school teachers, particularly as we go through the process of math, and curriculum, and Atlas. On the science side of things, because this is a job that, that has a couple of different content areas that we're working with. We also have brand-new science standards that have just been recently approved. We're working with our middle school teachers to begin to redesign our middle school curriculum, which is something that the groundwork has been laid over the last couple summers in preparation for. And now that we have an official stamp of approval, we're starting to dig in a little deeper and develop that curriculum. I've been looking at resources for our elementary teachers, because we have a goal to bring some consistency to our elementary programs and provide our teachers with some, with rich materials that allow them to really engage in scientific practices with their students consistently, so we can kind of, again, begin to look at that growth from K through twelve and have a comprehensive science program. And that also takes the form of working with the high school department chair to think about what their needs are as they look to revision of curriculum, which isn't happening quite yet. We're, you know, we've been given the hold to, to not change anything just yet, but even looking at what are they doing within their curriculum? What supports do they need for professional development moving forward, and what does that plan look like? Outside of the district, I also work with the Asabet Valley Collaborative and work with other curriculum leaders within that group through monthly meetings, but also through communication that happens, you know, what are you guys doing with your science program? You know, how do you level classes at the middle and high school? You know, that ongoing communication that happens, and they're a tremendous resource in that way. Also collaborating with districts of the MidWatch Science leaders through a grant we have. Also, the M S, MMSP grant, which is aimed primarily at our grade four through eight math teachers and special educators. It helps provide them with some professional development, some intensive professional development around math outside the district. By collaborating with other districts, we can, we're able to, to use grant monies to do that, which is something that on our own as a district, we may not get. And it provides, a lot of our teachers have taken advantage of that. Beyond that, I have also been looking at, you know, what, in working with Martina over the year, I'm thinking about what does next year look like. And so, moving forward, what do we need to do as we continue to roll, as we choose a math program, as we roll out a new math program, how do we support teachers, both in the program itself, but also in professional development around math? As we begin to continue to develop our curriculum, again, how do we support that movement forward momentum and also support our teachers in that? And look ahead to technologies that may need to support both of those efforts in working with Cindy, and how do we make sure that our ITS are on board to help us do that and support teachers in math?
So, what are you doing next year?
That's kind of the nutshell.
What are you doing?
What are you doing next year?
What are you doing?
What am I doing next year?
What is Steph doing next? What is Martina going to be doing next year?
So, well, there'll be the implementation of a new math program.
And what grades does that impact?
K through five.
Okay.
So, there will be professional development associated with that, that will need to be organized and deployed and look at what teachers need. We're going to continue to facilitate the mapping of curriculum in science, math, and technology. We need to continue to pilot kits for our elementary. We're going to start a mini-pilot of class kits this spring, which will roll into next year.
That's science.
For science. And so, they, we have a slow rollout plan of a new strand each year over three years, so be mindful of what's on teachers' plates. New math, new ELA, and how do we support them in that and make it manageable? So, that'll be coming down the pipe. There's the continued development of middle school curriculum. And again, that's a slow rollout from six to seven. The seven will be in development next year, and six will be in implementation and continuing to work with eight. Continuing to work with the high school teachers and the middle school teachers around using the technologies in science to help accomplish that, that goal of increased scientific practices and getting kids really working with data consistently in all of our, all of our classes across all levels. We'll also be looking at revising assessment, the assessments that we use as we, now we're bringing in a new math program. We need to look at the assessments that we give and look at our benchmarks for students. There'll need to be revision to the elementary and middle school report cards around both math and science that goes along with that. Let's see. Martina will continue to supervise teachers in pre-K through twelve for STEM and work on curriculum maps. And let's see, we'll continue to supervise our safety contracts for both the science and, for science at the middle school and the high school. And collaborate on the curriculum review cycle, which is something that, as standards came in in 2011 for Common Core, it kind of got us off our curriculum review cycle. We're at a point now where we need to get back in a regular cycle of, of how we move forward with curriculum review and the purchase of new materials. So, that's an ongoing effort as well.
Okay, that's a.
I've got more.
She's busy.
You are busy, Lynn.
A lot to do.
So, questions for Steph?
Want a clarification here? Are we asking budgetary questions, or are we asking questions on the role?
We are asking questions on the budget, questions on the role. What do you want to ask?
Can I give a clarification on the budget?
Yeah.
Just so that you are aware. And I'm, they really did not develop the budget. They were sort of given the budget, and we are now in the process of working towards, what is the budget going to be used for, for next year?
Right.
So, I just want.
So, you were given.
Well-aware and thank you very much.
You were given a, you were given a sum of money. You were given a sum of money, and you have to parse out what you want. So, maybe next year, we can start from a needs-based perspective, and you. So maybe next year, we can start from a needs-based perspective, and you can submit.
Well, they will be working collaboratively with the building principals to develop the needs, from the needs base of each school, and by subject area of what they need for professional development.
So is that, is that how you normally do it? How do you normally, Martina, Cindy? Do you determine what you're going to do this year for next year? Is that typically how you do it?
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely identify priorities. And for example, for textbooks, we would suggest. But in the end, it was, we didn't manage the budget, so.
And now you will.
And the goal is to decentralize their role. As I said before, they are considered central office. And I want to take away that moniker on them and that they are district and they really support on the same level as the principals. They are their big, their support to help with the teachers and with the students.
Lynn, you have a question?
Do they physically present?
No, physically, they're here.
Okay.
But they are, as I've learned, some of, they're always up. They're offices, they're offices here. But again, in my, in my travels and what I've learned is they are considered central office. They have that label.
Are they going to be more autonomous than just?
Not autonomous, but they're, I mean, they'll still have, but I.
No, I think that's what you're getting away from.
I want them district-wide out there working with the principals and the staff.
Neil.
I do have a few, but I will.
You go, you get one, and then Kathy gets one.
To anyone else who may have. So in addition to all of those duties that you listed, are you also doing evals too on top of that? Okay.
I did. I am not this year.
Okay. But that's part of the role typically is doing the eval, like assisting administration with the evals?
Some of them, not all of them.
Okay.
In my opinion, they should be.
Okay.
As long as they hold the certification of supervisor-director, that they should be contributing members of that. And I know the principals would greatly appreciate them to have that role of being able to do some walkthroughs and provide feedback.
And that's, that was, that's what I do.
Okay, thank you.
Or have done in the past.
Thank you. Which, this directly relates to the part B of the first question you asked?
Oh, you know, he's always got it, he's got it all the time.
So I know that you mentioned PD, that you guys coordinate PD and so forth. And now I'm going to flip this over to the budget. And I'm looking and I'm seeing that various, various courses, various departments all have their own PD and textbook costs, which seem to fly in the face of what these ladies are doing here because it doesn't, and maybe it's the way it works, but it seems like that's decentralized, like out of your control, and yet it's PD. And how does that all work? Because it seems like it sort of chucks you guys off at the kneecaps.
As I've done a whole study through about professional development, which I'll have for you. I don't have tonight, but I will have for you. It outlines where PD is in throughout the whole budget and where it is. And again, it's, there's building professional development. There's individual professional development in people's contracts and so forth. But they're more, their role is really focused on a district-wide, although they do touch. So there's PD at the high school in, in math, in the math department. And she's utilizing some of the funds here, but she's, the math department has funds allotted to them for them to get, go to a conference or things like that.
And does that work for the high school too with the textbooks? So there's a textbook, people have funding for textbooks.
That's correct.
And you guys are identifying the textbooks, but the department seemed to have the money for the various things. And again, that doesn't seem to mesh.
And right, and the goal is to really foster that, and it's, and it's started. They've started the dialogue of, as an example, they'll now be meeting with Dr. Graham every two weeks.
Okay.
Oh, is that a new thing?
But on a budgetary side, does that move, will that money, because that's the approach that I'm looking at in this one. Does that money then move to a centralized location where then the English department needs textbooks or whatever? This gets approved and then it gets released? Or does it stay divided by the different departments?
That's a good question. I can't answer that for you, Neil, right now because you're in, you're in a totally different budget.
Okay.
Section, but that is something that can be entertained.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Kathy.
Just had, and maybe it was answered, but relative to teacher supervision, so they contribute, they're contributors, and the principal holds responsibility for.
They're the primary.
Primary.
But right now, I believe it's only Martina and Cindy are contributing ones because they hold the certification, although Patty holds the certification now too. And you, and you do also. But that is a piece of the puzzle that gets into the educator evaluation process that has, of your district that's currently in place.
So if this is, and I'm looking at you because you probably don't. If these are K-12 positions and they're contributing to teachers K-12, how is that? So who gets selected? Because.
How are they assigned?
How are they assigned?
Right now, they're not, my, my, and you've done it, so.
So we, it looks very different for the two of us. So because there are so many STEM educators in the district, and we just began it last year, I guess I'll say. We, I focused on the high school, doing walkthroughs there for all STEM educators there because that was the area of greatest need in terms of the administrator load. And then beyond that, I supervise the math specialists, the tenured math specialists, the professional status one. And then Will do so for the one at Sawyer once she's beyond the three years.
I have a question for you. What are the transitional hooks from one grade span to the next? Because you seem to be able to provide continuity in the curriculum based on the subject area. So how are you able to transition from the eighth grade to the high school?
Yeah, so we, the process looks very different depending on the subject area. Two, we're working on more consistency, but math has a more formal transition plan where we developed a protocol for identifying students and placing them in different courses. And we work together with the middle and high school teachers to develop that. The science version of that is quite different. It's, it's much more based on the student's interest and then specifically their grades. And actually, Robin can speak to that because she's an eighth grade teacher.
Right, it's based on their grades, their math placements. And, and you know what, and because, and part of that is there are multiple options for them as questions. So there has to be a piece of that. You know, that, that interest piece and then level piece. So there, there's, it's a multi-layered recommendation versus the math one. And I would say that even, you know, as we continue that process and think about how to build those bridges between middle school and high school. So for instance, we have some math teachers going to the high school to their late start next, next week to talk about placement. And that kind of came out of a conversation that they really want to have that dialogue. So, you know, the more that we can do to help facilitate that and make sure that they have coverage in their classes so they can go up and, and visit and have that conversation. And that's something that we can help do and help, you know, be part of that conversation.
Kathy needs to leave.
Step out for 25 minutes.
Thanks, Kathy. We'll see you in a little bit. Okay, Kurt, do you want to go ahead then?
Good. Who's next?
Sure.
Hello. As the English Language Arts Coordinator, my goal is to ensure strong literacy experiences and equity. As someone new to the district, my primary responsibility is, right now, is just getting to know the district, know the culture, get to work with the staff. So what I've been doing is setting lots of time aside and going in and doing lots of walkthroughs and really getting a sense of how literacy instruction is delivered and what kinds of student work I see. So I've been having conversations with teachers, and it's really been very positive. They're starting to use me as a resource, which is wonderful. I've been meeting with some teachers during their prep periods or before school or after school and problem-solving how we can, you know, make the literacy program stronger. What's been particularly helpful too is the collaboration with the principals and working closely with the principals in order to understand what the needs are. So it's, it's meant a lot because I'm looking at assessment data. I, I've been, you know, meeting with all the different stakeholders and I'm, I'm getting to know my way. But I, I really feel that it's been successful so far. People have been very receptive to, to working with me. So that's been positive. And I've been very conscious to make sure that I'm in all three levels. So I've been spending a lot of time in the high school. I attend the late start meetings. I've been collaborating with the teachers. We've been doing some work around close reading and, and how we can use that for professional development. At the middle school level, I've been providing resources around the upcoming MCAS assessment and the changes that are going to occur for next year. At the elementary level, we have been implementing the phonics program at the K-1 level. And this coming year, we'll be implementing in grade two. So I'm working on professional development for the teachers for grade two and supports for next year. And regarding next year, and I, I hope you get a chance. I spent some time outlining, and I don't want to bore you with all of this. I'm hoping that you'll take a look at it. But some of the things that I'm planning on doing next year is really looking at the data and understanding where students are and really looking at the interventions we're using with kids. One other piece I'd like to focus on in terms of data is having students responsible for their own data. There's a lot of research that when students take ownership of their own understanding of data, they, they deepen their knowledge. So, so that's something I'm very interested in. I'm also working with teachers to continue the curriculum maps. And I also want to look at the benchmark assessments. Some of the teachers feel the assessments could be stronger. So we want to look at that next year as well. And then in having conversations with Dr. Bates, we talked about the possibility of me working with Title I. I've been a Title I director in the past two districts that I was in. We also talked about some social studies coordination because there's lots of literacy in social studies. And then finally, I have a master's degree in reading and I feel, and I'm certified. I have my director's and principal license and all of that. So I feel I could give some supervision to the literacy specialists and supervise them if, if that's agreeable to everybody.
Well, that is definitely something you and Dr. Be, well, he's smiling. So that's something you and Dr. Bates will work on. I really appreciate the fact that you folks are here sharing what you're doing because I know that we've asked, we didn't quite get it. And I think hearing some of what we're hearing tonight and in working with Dr. Bates, I'm really excited to see what you guys are going to be able to do across the district. So anybody have any questions for Patty? You're up.
So a lot of what they said, I do the same, only in a different content area. So, but I am responsible for making sure that students pre-K through 12 have access to appropriate technologies and that we can provide them enriching and deep and authentic learning experiences with their use. I'm also, my responsibility to support staff, all staff, with the use of not just instructional technology, but also productivity tools that we use in the district. I do supervise and evaluate all the instructional technology specialists and library media teachers and two library assistants in the district. In addition to that, I don't, I also chair the professional development committee. And it's, over the years that I've been here, we've had turnover within the department. So it's always looked a little different with the responsibilities. So the last few years, I've chaired the committee and organized all of the days. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot of hours that you put in to making sure that everybody has a place to go and the resources that they need for those scheduled days, especially on the full day. The committee, we, I create the surveys and send the surveys out. We collect information about that, and then we review that. And then we help tweak what we're doing during the year or, you know, help plan for the following year with that feedback. And then again, I also facilitate on those early release days, as does Patty. You didn't mention that, but we all facilitate Java likes. I don't know if you're familiar with the word Java likes. So my two groups that I meet with are instructional technology and library media. But then again, during that time, and Robin does STEM and Patty does social studies at ELA, but we also all run around and help every, all the other Java as needed. So we're always around and about. So it's a big startup with technology in the beginning of the year. It's a lot of hours to spend trying to get all the instructional technology ready for the rollover for the students and the teachers to use, as well as the benchmark online system like AIMS Web. I also oversee baseline edge, the teacher evaluation system. So that was a new responsibility that I had under me, I think, three years ago is when I first started. This is our third year of using the system. I also, when we purchased Rubicon Atlas, that came under myself too. So I also organized that. So the district website was never really under me, but this year, when we transferred to a new website, that got put under me. So I did all that and coordinated all of that and did, took many hours of training and tried to get everybody ready to do that. I also do E-Rate and coordinate that throughout the year. That's a very time-sensitive task. And so even though I only work 200 days, I'm checking my email throughout the summer months or whatever because you have to respond to things in a timely manner. So, let's see.
Don't tell me you do more.
Well, you guys have this, so I don't need to go over all of this. You're probably more interested in, oh, and also the grade eight Chromebook initiative that was, you know, just preparing them and the guidelines for that and the rollout for that. I've also, you'll be happy to know, I surveyed all of the students. We had 100% participation in the student survey. I also surveyed all the grade eight teachers and met with them face-to-face. So I'm organizing that data, and it looks very, very positive, very positive experience that they've had with the one-to-one. I meet with principals and administrators as needed and any teachers. I'm always available. They have my phone number. They call me. They email me. I'll just go into a classroom if they want. So just helping out the instructional technology specialists.
Okay. You've got more. I'm so sorry, Cindy.
Do you want to know what I'm focusing on next year?
I don't know. I don't know if I believe in your one human.
I just wanted to bring up that the new technology literacy and computer science standards are now out and they're out for public comment. I don't know if anyone's taken the opportunity to look at them, but they're quite extensive. The national standards are also going to be revised. So next year, we really have to take a look at those standards and really assess what we're doing already that aligns with these standards and then perhaps either adapt or adopt them. So that's going to be a big chunk of time. The last time we went through and really revised all the standards was my first year here, which was about eight years ago. So it's time to do that again. I'm going to support, make sure we have all the supports for the new math program for K through five. Coordinate, make sure the ITS are in there, and that, that'll be a good focus for them to help those teachers with that. We'll support the middle school teachers and high school teachers with new technology software and instruments that they'll be using. Again, the one-to-one Chromebooks going into the high school, should we continue with that? And just continue all the other things they did. And continue to chair the technology committee as well. And hopefully, the draft is just about, I think it's just about done. I'm hoping in March, we can finalize that, and then we can really, next year, put it into action and start measuring progress on the goals.
Good.
I have a question for you, but does, I know these folks do. Neil, of course, has a question. Please feel free to ask.
First of all, I sit on the technology committee, which Cindy chairs. All of you ladies are on, and you've been on maternity leave, so.
I'm on this period.
But there's a ton of work that's been done, and I think there's some really great, really great stuff. that's going to come forward in the next, uh, in the next year or so from that. And that's from all the hard work that everyone on that community's been doing and people outside too.
And your point.
My point.
And I do have a question.
And I, and I do have one. Um, so, E-rate, uh, E-rate two point O. So, I'm a stickler on this one, right? Because, um, I went to the seminar on the E-rate two point O. We're eligible for at least a couple hundred thousand dollars for the two point O at this point in time.
Over a five year.
Over five years, what they can, now, I think we're going into, going into, uh, it'll be year three, I think, next year. Is it year two? This is the first year.
Well, we're applying this year for the, on the new modernization. You're talking about category two, which is new. So, they're phasing out telephone just to, so people understand what, right? So, um, last year, the advice was not to go into and ask for funding right away from category two because it was so new and there were so many, um, I want to say red tape. It's, you know, the FCC and the way they do it was very convoluted and people were nervous about doing that and not doing it correctly. When I say the timing is of the essence, it's timing, we were in the communications. It's very, very convoluted. It's a complex process. So, um, we are applying, so Succi, the technology manager and his team are right now creating a list for the consultant to be submitted for all the infrastructure that will cover category two.
Okay. Cause I noticed, the reason I bring that up is I noticed it wasn't, there was nothing on two point O on this upcoming budget. So, we expect to see this for net, E-rate's on there, but not two point O. So, I was wondering if that's going to be on the next year's budget or if we have money that's going to be coming in that we need to keep an eye on.
I believe the cost for the infrastructure is in the budget, in the.
The E-rate reimbursement, so.
Oh, the reimbursement?
Yeah, so.
Well, we wouldn't know what that expected reimbursement is. So, it's never a guarantee that you're going to get a reimbursement. So, we always have to budget for the full amount, just in case something happened, right?
With you. But I just want to make sure that we have that on the radar so that if we do get reimbursed, that we, we have some place where that's going to be showing.
Until they give the, that entire list. But you do know that, uh, cause you went to the thing, it's based on the number of students. And that amount, dollar amount must be spent in that building according to the number of students.
Right.
Right. So, we're, I don't think we're looking at getting the full amount for each building first year.
I'm totally with you. This really doesn't have to do with you. This do with more of the budget and accountability on where the E-rate two point O is going to fall. And, and I just want to make sure that if it comes in the middle of the year, that we have something in, some system and a process so that we don't lose fifty thousand dollars floating out there somewhere that's unaccounted for. Uh, so that's, that's the only reason I've asked that. Um, and then the only other thing, the district improvement plan. Are you familiar with the district improvement plan at all? Because there are four parts to the district improvement plan and technology plays a primary part in every one of those, uh, pieces. And I just didn't know, that's one thing, I stepped out of the room for a minute. So, in your hundred and fifty things that you were listing there, that might have been one of them. But, um, i- i- is that something that you're, you're actively involved with at this point in time for making sure that the district improvement plans are actually able to be met through the technology needs that are attached to those plans? Do you know what I mean? Cause there's certain things that we see or I see that need to be scalable in order and, but they're not necessarily fleshed out. So, I didn't know who's on top of that and who's been working with that.
So, I am aware of the district improvement plan. Um, with the transition, um, that's been happening this year, I, I need some clarity on that myself.
Okay.
Um, I didn't create that, so I, you know.
Yep. No, I'm not putting you on the hot seat. I just want to know again.
So, we did when we planned PD, for instance, I believe you have something in there about, um, there's something in there about Rubicon Atlas and the creation of the units. So, PD is, um, focused on the creation of, um, units using that UBD framework. And that's because it started with the district improvement plan. So, the digital learning, um, I know is in there, but I do need clarification on what some of those words mean. But I'm making good progress in digital learning. I just need some clarification.
Totally with you on that. Again, budget thoroughly, I want to make sure that that's addressed and that you have, or anybody who needs those tools, have them available to meet the goals or we need to change our goals, one or the other.
Well, that comes through the administration.
Right. I just didn't know what the activities were on this end and I'm absolutely on board with that.
I know you are. Good to know.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have questions for these ladies? Mark?
Um, I was very impressed by all of the organizations necessary for professional development days. And I'm just curious, what is the lead time to actually get all of the organized? Is that something you accomplished by June before or are you running a place during the year to make things happen?
Both. Yeah. And I mean, in August, I, I, you know, come back around mid-August and it's just, you know, it's just a lot of just things that need to happen. It, it's a large district and you're, I always tell people, once a year, I feel like I plan a wedding because you have to have a place for 400 people to go. And sometimes when we do a choice workshop where it's all choice all day, 400 people have to be in a place for two hours, then two hours, then lunch, then two hours. And it has to be something that's meaningful to them and that, you know, they like. So, just gathering all that together and planning it is, um, days, not even hours.
So, I have a question for you, all of you. And it's not with regards to dollars. It's what do you need? What do you think needs to happen in order for you to be as effective as you can be and provide the level of service that you believe you could, should, and want to, to the district?
I could, I think that the new, um, communications and collaborative work that Dr. Bates is setting up is sorely needed and that it's regular. It's not that we don't meet with principals, but it will be regular. Um, and so that will be very, very helpful, that we're on the same page all the time with the principal. Um, so that's one thing.
What do you think, Patty?
I would concur. And I would also say with the, uh, curriculum materials, I think that through the conversations with principals, we can better coordinate so that if there are some large curriculum purchases being, um, made at the middle school or elementary, that we're well aware and we're not duplicating. So, just tightening that up is going to be big.
And I would echo both of them.
And also I think along with that goes that piece of clearer lines of communication and also clearer understanding of the role that we play across the district.
I think that's key for everyone, right? Even us.
Yes. And I, and I, and I think that allows us to be able to work closely with teachers at all levels. And I think that it allows us to do that job of envisioning a rich curriculum for our students and experiences they move from PK to twelve.
What about Ms. Martina?
Um, I also, I think everything that you said is, is true. And, um, I think we would like to contribute too, but also we need a, um, vision that we can kind of work toward, both in our role, but also sort of, we all want, um, everything great for our district. But I think, uh, one thing that makes it really hard for us is we're all kind of working toward different things. So, to work together with principals, but really throughout the district to be able to establish that and then work toward it would be what I need also.
Do you have any final comments?
No, I thank them very much. They've worked very hard on this and, uh, they've worked collaboratively together. And, uh, again, it's really nice. I sat in on the meeting when they met with Dr. Graham and, uh, I think it was very productive. And I think, um, the wall is now slowly breaking down and they, they still have a lot of work to do. But I, I, again, I think you have, uh, the human capacity right here that is very valuable to your district.
Well, thank you and thank you for, for working at that.
Sure. So, um, I think we're going off your comment. Um, why would we, why would an elementary school be making a major purchase that you wouldn't know about? I mean, theoretically, wouldn't that all be tied together?
Theoretically, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, ladies. Thank you for coming and sharing your information. Martina, enjoy the rest of your time and come back.
Thank you very much.
But we love you. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is, um, the interim superintendent entry plan. Um, so, I think, before I turn it over to Dr. Bates, um, Dr. Bates came into the district and we asked him to obviously handle the day-to-day operations of the organization. But we also asked him to take a fresh look and help us find our, this, this group of people, you know, help us work or find the groups of folks and the functions and help us understand what we're doing well and what we could do better. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to you to share your information.
As you know, with a, a transition plan or an entry plan, it usually runs anywhere from six months, sometimes to a year. So, this has been done in seven weeks. And so, it's, uh, uh, the goals of the plan, uh, you know, were basically to understand your district, the mission, your values, your goals, your vision, um, to really understand the protocols that are here, your history, uh, those celebrations that are, that are important to an organization. Familiarize myself with the district personnel and community leaders, uh, the strengths of the school district, the needs, um, and really to try to establish myself as a learner to support, uh, the, the people. And also meant to develop some very short-term goals, uh, that will enable for you to move forward in the search for your, for your new, uh, leader. The methods I used are, uh, looking at all the different documents that you have and so forth, uh, which are a lot. And, uh, every day I learn something new. And then looking at the groups to interview. And again, usually in a, in a, in a plan, I feel badly that the time is not allowed, but I will be doing it, uh, meeting with staff and students and parents. Um, so that's very important. And so, basically the people that I met with and I asked the three basic questions of what are the strengths of the district? What are the needs and what are their needs for me as the interim superintendent? And if you go through and I look for a common thread throughout, um, what the, the very positive things of the district are. And, uh, it's just restating again, is that you have a very strong sense of community, uh, the, the community support and a belief in high expectations for students and teachers. The district's very strong foundation of service to students. It's built on strength of the talented and committed, dedicated personnel. And there's a sense of pride in the district. And again, I, you have a great, um, wealth of, of human capital within the district. Then I get into, I tried to find, uh, you know, something that, about moving forward and it's, uh, turning over a new leaf. And I'm not going to get into the whole piece of, I looked at organizational change and so forth. And when you look at all the research in organizational change, there are, you know, one is done because, basically because of, uh, financial need. Another one is done because of, uh, what they call the big bank theory, that you need to get something done immediately. Um, but I really, really tried to focus on, uh, the learning organization and used a lot of Peter Senge's work. I'm not going to go through all that, uh, you know, about the systems type of, of thinking when you're trying to look at, at change and, and moving forward. The piece that came through, uh, for the needs, it really felt, was really built around, and if you looked at that, was focused on teaching and learning. It came out very clearly that they didn't know who they were, what were their roles and responsibilities, who made decisions. Um, and that's why I really wanted them to present tonight so you could see that and we're working towards that. And so, in developing the goals, I really look, again, look at, um, Senge's work and, and look at you, as Nishoba developing their purpose story. What is their purpose? And as a leader, looking at the leader as the designer and the steward and the teacher. And so, basically developing and helping with your FY seventeen budget, um, which George has started a great opportunity now, doing the budget booklet with the narrative and making sure it goes back and supports your needs. Um, and then looking at, um, evaluating the roles again of the teaching and learning coordinators. Because if, if you really look at your district's beliefs, you have four beliefs there that are all focused on curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional learning. You've made that. I didn't make that. You made that. And you have people here that can build upon that. And so, and the third goal would, I would like to, during this transition time, again, helping the leadership team, um, in their transition, uh, to help with, with the change that's about to come. And then the fourth is, um, provide you at, with assistance, uh, as you move forward in your, in your quest for your new administrative leader. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Thanks for, um, an incredible amount of work over a short period of time. Really thoughtful efforts, respectable and respectful. Um, and in all of my dealings with you, I really appreciate the fact that you have consistently and always, not just talked about it, but actually illustrated that the students are really the focus of the work. And, and that's why we all joined the school committee. So, thank you for that. Always looking through the lens of things, through the lens of the students on behalf of the students. Okay, so, anybody have any questions for Dr. Bates?
I, I hope everybody will take the time and look at the, um, the transition plan, turning over a new leaf. Um, it is, it is wonderful. It's inspirational. And I, I'm glad that you used Peter Senge's work and the concept of the learning organization. Always bothered my mind that, you know, you're, you're working with teaching and learning and then you're going off in all these other directions, but that gives a focus. And also, um, the, 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 the concepts about being a steward, you know, the responsibility you have in that regard to everybody and a teacher. Um, I just think, I hope, like I said, I hope everybody will take the time to read it. Um, thank you.
I just want to say that, um, I think what you put here, Dr. Bates, um, in writing also addresses the Niasse concerns quite directly. Um, and I think that if people do take time to actually go through what you've put in here, you're going to find that there's some really good things about changing that culture, the leadership perspective and so forth, that are just nothing but good. Um, that's going to come from it for, through working in the district and, and so forth. So, I applaud that aligning to, uh, to those needs also.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
Okay. And, um, when I was appointed as the interim, um, I was given the charge to sort of look at, uh, all different functions in the, in the district through a different lens. Um, and again, um, the all different, the functions of a, a learning organization have a, a lifeline with every bit of it is connected to students in some aspect. So, from top all the way down. And some are more closer to line than others, but there's always that, what I call that common lifeline, uh, going to your, your, your focus of your mission. And that's to, uh, really provide for every single one of your students here in, in the district. And I also look at the budget process and ultimately the approved budget process as a way to translate your organization's objectives and strategies, um, and goals. And it really cascades, cascades down, uh, through each level of your organization. And so, um, change is difficult and, uh, it's never easy. And it impacts the day-to-day routines of everybody. Uh, and as stated in my transition plan, uh, with Peter Senge, a strong learning organization is where people continually expand their capacity. I think that's very important. And creates results that are, that they truly desire. And where new and expansive patterns of thinking are nurtured. And where collected and aspirations are set free. And where people are continually learning to see the whole together. That it isn't one person or, again, and I've used this terminology, of this, um, central office of being an ivory tower. It's more of you, the people out there who are in the trenches every single day are the important people. And the administration is there to really support that and provide them, uh, all the tools that they need. So, um, the goals of, uh, and looking. So, the goals of, and looking at some sort of reorganization, again, this is just an option, a proposal based on what I've seen, it's not written in stone at all, and it's really was to demonstrate fiscal restraint in presenting the proposed FY budget, balanced with the goal of maintaining a high-quality educational program for all students, to optimize the services at the central administrative level and provide coordinated services. One of the things that was heard, to provide a full-time dedicated principal to the students and staff at the Hale Middle School, and to reestablish direct instructional technology services to the middle school at Burbank and at Hale. And so, one of the options is to consolidate the assistant superintendent's supervisory duties with the superintendent, some aspects of the director of facilities and with the high school principal, and consolidate the financial office and human resource office under the leadership of a director of finance and human resources, and consolidate all of the student services under the leadership of a director of pupil services. And then appoint one of the current curriculum instructional assessment coordinators as a team leader to help coordinate them, and that would be a, just a, you know, select one of them who's gonna try to keep them organized. And add the two additional technologies specialists to the middle school. And again, to support your school's mission of educating all students to their fullest potential, I make these suggestions. And again, you asked for my observation and opinion, and I'm just sharing this with you. And as you're currently going through operations and systems that you think are a healthy activity, you, as the school committee, is also demonstrating that with your financial analysis being held through Masbo. I've looked at your systems and organizations and followed the charge of making a professional judgment and offer these suggestions as your consideration.
Okay, has everyone had a chance, I know it made the packet late this afternoon, has everyone had a chance to review the organizational proposal? And I think we need to have some discussion, some questions, ask Dr. Bates some clarifying questions. There's no vote tonight, we need to have the opportunity to ask questions, discuss, and then next week when we come back, which is slated to be our budget hearing, we're gonna, we'll vote on, have some more deliberation and vote on it, okay? But I'd like to hear, before I give many of my opinions, I'd like to hear what everyone else's perspective is, and thank you for the effort that you put into this. I think, though, actually, before I ask you guys, I'm just gonna do it. I would like to understand, you do look through the lens of the student, and so each of these recommendations is in some way directly tied to student achievement.
I always go back, again, everything I do, I go back to the mission of your district, and how is that relevant?
All right, so we might have some specific questions on that, but I'll start to entertain questions from the group. Neil.
Can we start from this end and work around?
Kat?
I don't have a specific question. I read through the interim superintendent's entry plan. You're talking about a different document, the org chart?
Look in the, in the packet, and it is called...
Reorg Recommendations.
Reorg Recommendations. So, while you're reading that, Jones, Mark, rather, did you have, did you have a chance to read it?
Just call me Bert.
Bert, Bert, did you have a chance to read it?
I did. So, as it turned out, there are some additional positions and then some reformulation of responsibilities that may or may not cause a position to be created as a factor. Mostly in the instructional, technical people at the two middle schools, that's perhaps additional.
Right, that's something that, again, that I've heard from the committee that they would like to see reinstituted that has been eliminated a while ago.
Do you have particular thoughts on what our proposals, in terms of what devolves to the high school principal and the facilities director?
As an, just one of the examples right now, the athletic director reports to the assistant superintendent. The athletic director is directly up there at the high school and checking with a lot of high school, again, doing some homework. The athletic director reports directly to the principal.
So, bringing people to talk to the supervisor personnel in their own building?
Yep.
Might be one way to look at that.
That's a good, that's a good point, because one of the things that we've often talking about for a while is accountability at the school level and looking for efficiency within the organization, but only if that efficiency helps drive student achievement.
The athletic director is a district administrator, six to twelve.
Say it again?
The athletic director is a district administrator, grade six to twelve.
And I'm not speaking about just the athletic director, I think that was an illustration, but appreciate that. But I, but I think that there's a bigger charge that we had asked, which was give the principals the responsibility, the authority, and the accountability to manage their schools, right? I think that's what we all agree to. Nicole, thoughts?
Well, first of all, before I start to grill you, this is why we were very excited to have someone like you here, with a fresh set of eyes on our district, and I really appreciate the thought and the thoughtfulness that went into this. Thank you. But I just wanna know a few things. When you were putting this together as the interim superintendent, not someone who's going to be our superintendent, what were the guiding, your guiding principles there? Was it to minimize disruption, come in under the assessment, hand a generic structure over to the new superintendent, like a clean slate?
A clean slate, so that they, again, so they, if this were the case, if any personnel had to be hired or whatever, that that person would have that opportunity and staff rush with them.
And this structure that you are proposing looks to me like a legitimate, you know, running any sort of organization or business, that looks very...
Well, just as an example, again, right, wrong, or indifferent, I look at your HR and your business office right here. You have already, have the infrastructure that's already there. I didn't put it in place, so they're already sharing staff. So, it's just having one person that's gonna oversee both of those positions.
And how difficult is it to find someone with those?
One never knows. I, you know, I checked with the official...
No, I don't mean that, I mean that skill set. Is that a unique skill set, or is that a skill set that's in the market?
It's not unusual. It's not common. Sometimes it's not common. When I did a, I had a leader send out emails to a lot of different districts. Most of them were small regional districts and so forth, and she did a spreadsheet, specifically looking at teaching and learning and so forth, and how that is organized. And you'll find the administrative structure in a lot of districts is very different. It just depends on the meet, what their needs are, their financial needs are, and how they can share jobs. As we all know, and I've learned it in my experience, the position is only as good as the person that's in it. You can have a job, combine jobs or whatever, that can totally fall apart because of the person that's in it. I've had that experience, you know, in hiring and try to combine some jobs. Or you can have somebody in that position and they do an outstanding job. So, it's finding the right person and skill set that can work.
And then before I hand it off, we are about to approve a budget that this is not, that this is not a part of. So, I guess this would go more to what, to the rest of you. How, how does this conversation affect our next, our next couple of meetings?
Well, I think that if we're gonna have this discussion tonight, take the week to think about it, come back to the next meeting, I mean, right now, this is not built into the budget, but we do have to make a decision based, we hired this experienced gentleman to provide some input. I think we need to ask the questions and vet it, and come back and make the decision. Does this go into the budget, or are there pieces that we want into it? And this should be included if we agree to it in the FY seventeen budget. I think it's, you know, again, just looking at it on paper today, I think that it would not be a valuable exercise to have the information and not utilize it. And I have a couple of questions, but if there's information that's in this paper, in the proposal, that's specifically targeted to our district, you didn't pick up a generic document, did you?
No.
Okay, good. So, this is for our kids and our district, and Dr. Bates has no reason to not provide us his best recommendation, then I feel like we have to really give it a good go. I have a question on the student services. Can you talk about what that entails and how that serves students and...
Sure. There are many districts out there that have a director of pupil services that is all encompassing. Some districts will look at it of all the different aspects of it, guidance, social worker, 504, everything is in a different silo, so to speak.
Is that how we are?
You have some bits and pieces of that. It's bringing it all under one umbrella, and so that when you are trying to look at the whole child, you have one person who's overseeing all that. Also, in a budget sense, you have one person who's really looking at the whole piece of it and can help work with all the people that are under, because you do have layers underneath you of working with that, so you're dealing with one, so you're not going back and forth.
Does it encompass the problem that we have with the allergies? Would that fall?
It, yes, it could.
Under that?
Yep. I mean, there are districts that have, under the director of pupil services, they are the director of special ed, they're the director of nursing, they're the director of 504, you know, all of that. It just depends.
But would have a central place where we don't have to...
Where everything would be, exactly.
So, so one student gets a complete 360 degree?
Yeah, you could call it that, yeah.
Okay. Kathy, or Nicole Yumor. Kathy's my turn. It's your turn.
I liked the proposals. I would wanna see the budget impact and, like we were doing with some other things, looking at what, obviously, what the cost would be, what the offsets would be.
Right.
Because there is some moving around, and so, are you saying that we'll have information?
Yes.
We're gonna have to, yeah.
Okay.
Because we need to make a decision.
Yes, I hear you. Thank you.
Organization chart. Could we see this?
It's in, you have it. Yeah, go to your email. I'm sorry, I thought it was sent to a leader, it was my fault.
No, that's okay, it just means you can see it.
It's in your email.
Oh, okay.
It's in, can you get at your email?
It's right. And then the only other question I had was, would this affect any contracts?
Not at this point.
I did have to, but it's just an exercise in patience, which is...
Your questions?
Yeah, so, after the ladies made their presentation here, it was, I think, in my mind, evident that there are things that are kind of scattered all over the place. And that leads to frustrations. It leads to not really knowing who does what, where. And so, there's a lot of bumping into each other, there's a lot of turning circles, there's a lot of wasted time, which is what I have heard since I've been here in this very short time from teachers when I talk to about efficiency. Time is really, that's the biggest, most precious material that they need. So, I see some of the things that you're talking about here, saving that time. I'm seeing things that you're taking here, saving that time. So, when I use the word efficiencies, because that's my buzzword, and this is for Ann Needle, so that she understands, efficiencies is not the same as cost-cutting. Efficiencies is taking something and making it work more effectively.
Are you being nice to Ann because you lost?
If that means for less money, and often it does, then that's the way I believe it should be done.
Okay, so, so you say what you want to us...
I'm being very nice, no, I'm being very nice to Ann because I just wanna make sure that efficiencies isn't described as cost-cutting. So, I'm saying that I believe that this is a combination of both efficiency and potential cost-cutting, which does nothing but benefit the district. So, if I was unclear somehow, just ask me how I was, and I'm happy to clarify.
Kathy's here. Jump in, please.
So, I think it's great, and I think it's amazing that we have this opportunity to have you kind of come in with this fresh set of eyes and look at everything. To me, if I was the next superintendent coming in, I think I would want the package. I don't know if I'd want the changes already done this year personally. I would want all that information along with my assessment, because you don't wanna change something to change it again. And they might have a different view on this and not that, or this and not that, or it might just be exactly the same. And because we've had a lot of change, I just think that the work being done, all the data to support it, is the package that should be handed over and maybe not the change this year.
I hear what you're saying, and I don't have a definitive opinion one way or the other yet. I really appreciate what you did, but I need to think it through. But I'm wondering, is it fair to have someone come in into a structure that needs to be optimized, learn that structure for a year, and then have to change again to build a new structure? So, and what's the timing? What would the timing be if we enacted this for next year? How would that work with the new person coming in, so?
Well, I, just talking personal experience, if they were positions to be hired, they get advertised and so forth, and that new person, even though they don't start till July 1st, has a major role in the selection of the people that they're gonna be working with.
And the new, and the new superintendent, assuming we find the right person?
And you will.
Will be sele, will be selected in early May?
That's correct.
So, that's May, June, July, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Kathy, thank you.
What I, what I just, yeah, what I just wanna say is, this is a separate document, but what I see is that the goals and the proposals that are in this document support the, a lot of the information that Dr. Bates got in talking to people all over the district. So, it's not just the, I mean, it's what we directed Dr. Bates to do, but it seems to reflect the strengths that we see of ourselves, but also the concerns that folks have.
Right.
And there is a need for, or reflected in the comments, for some changes, some improvements, some things that folks think that we can be doing better. And I think that this, the proposals for these changes and some of the other things that will come out of it reflect that.
Have you talked with the principals?
I met with every, I was hoping to get to them early this morning, but unfortunately, it doesn't matter. I did speak with, I met with every single principal and spoke, because I wanted to personally explain to them and have them understand.
And what was their reaction?
It varied. You know, some were really excited and looked at it, and some were saying, okay. But I think overall, they looked at it as, in a positive vein.
That's good. That's good. I really think this pupil personnel services, I wanna, I wanna see more about that. How many districts have that function?
I can't give you the exact amount, but...
Well, do you, how, I mean, is it common on common?
I'll give you an example. I mean, as you know, as I've heard through here, you compare yourself a lot to Acton-Boxborough.
Don't smile when you say that.
You do, when it's convenient.
When it's convenient, that's a good one, Mike.
Acton-Boxborough for many years had, had a director of pupil services for many years, until just recently, under the Dugard administration, they sort of broke it apart, and they've made all now assistant superintendents of, in the different categories.
Well, they have neighborhood schools, right? Don't they, Acton-Boxborough?
Well, no, they have a choice system. They have open enrollment. They can, parents can choose any school they go.
That, that's what I meant, yeah.
But, you know, again, it just depends on the needs of a district and what you wanna put underneath that umbrella.
Okay. Any more questions? So take the information in the document. Thank you for all of this work.
And I will work and...
And we need to see the budget impacts.
Yes, yep.
For next week.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah. And then folks take the information back and think through it and come prepared next week. Okay?
Are you allowed to ask questions?
Um, we actually don't, we, we do take comments at the citizens' comment portion of the meeting, but if you wanna comment, when you come the next meeting, we'll do it, okay?
Well, feel free to please send us letters. That would be great.
Yeah, send us letters. Oh lordy, send us letters. Nice letters. Okay, follow up on principal. So this is follow up on principal presentations, but it's really follow up on principal presentations, follow up on the presentations that we had last week from technology. Help me out. Why can't I remember?
Last week.
Of sped?
Facilities.
And facilities.
Yep.
So anybody have any additional questions on that? Because one of the documents that George put together for us, thank you, George, and I know you each have had it, is the additional budget recommendations document. We need to go through this and identify, are you in, are you out, where do people feel? Because this is gonna directly impact the budget. So for Kathy and Neil, I know you weren't here, but I think you have the document. I'm not gonna go through and have George explain every single item again, but if we have a question on an item, certainly let's ask. The, one of the recommendations that George made was the reorganization of the facilities office.
Oh, you're gonna start on the first page?
Oh, did I start on the second page? I am so sorry.
Oh, yeah.
The classroom teacher enrollment in Sawyer. So, before I take a question on this, so I had written down forty-six, forty-eight students. That's what we were, we heard. But then in the packet, the document says sixty students, and that's, that, that makes me pause.
Well, I stated that, I clarified when I said I was pulling from my junior aid information. That's what I had at the time. And that's what we had. I said it was a couple of weeks, few weeks old.
So the, so the sixty, how do you feel about that? Solid?
I think that, it's, I didn't generate those numbers, so I, I assume that those are the numbers. Who did they come from?
What, what are we looking at?
Kindergarten.
This week's...
Those came right from the principals.
Right from the principals.
Okay, so I would assume, given, I didn't generate them, but given how they were asked, I would assume those are the registered people we have right now.
Yeah, yeah, they came after registration.
Those are all people who are registered.
Yes.
So in the past, I would say, this is just anecdotes, it doesn't happen the same every year, that those numbers tend to be what they are, or they tend to fall a little bit, in our experience. They don't usually add more. People who are registered, their kids from kindergarten are usually pretty efficient about it. So they tend to, I think those are pretty good, and in the past, they've fallen a little bit, but, you know, I can't guarantee that's gonna happen.
And I know we have new housing starts, 'cause we had a phone call in town hall to find out about that. So I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about this first piece, guys. Catlin and Kathy, do you wanna share?
We're just looking for the meeting.
Okay, do you want me to, you wanna use, what, it's go back to meetings?
Good.
Okay. Do you want me to read it out loud then?
Yeah, the part now.
One classroom teacher due to enrollment at Sawyer, fifty-five thousand dollars. Projected reduction in, because of projected reduction in kindergarten enrollment. And George, and based on the information that Alita got from the principal, there are now sixty students that are enrolled. So Sawyer School currently has four kindergarten sections. The recommendation is to reduce that to three kindergarten sections. And given the fact that there are now sixty students and I know there are housing starts right down my road, I'm not comfortable taking that.
I'm not. Not with sixty.
No, it's with you in the classroom. So that they'd recent, I understand, so they'd have people call up and register?
No, Alita got the information from Joel.
This is the...
So we're at sixty?
We're at sixty. Fifty-three full day.
We're at sixty right now. So...
Sawyer is probably, Sawyer is probably gonna have two more from retention.
So there's sixty-two without movement. So we don't have, I'm gonna vote on this all as a collectively, so indicate, yes or no on this one?
Yes.
You're, guess what?
I am for the redu- reduction.
Yeah.
If it averages fifteen students a classroom. Well, if we're, if we're not gonna get rid of the teacher, it will.
Then it'd be twenty.
But then it'll be over twenty per...
And I want you to look at the numbers of Stowe and Lancaster for their kindergarten enrollments.
But we're not reducing a teacher. We're not removing a teacher from the classrooms there.
No, and their enrollments are still at twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-three, a classroom.
But we're sixty and we get, how many is the average?
You're sixty-two. You're sixty-two.
We're at sixty-two and you get the average, how many trickle in? Eight, ten?
I know, it's, it's tended to trickle out, I'd say.
They tend to trickle out?
From the initial registration, they tend to trickle out. I can't tell you that's gonna happen, but that's been, that's been the history.
Okay.
Registration's a thingy, so...
There's a couple of years we've ended up with very small kindergarten classes for that reason. We planned for a higher number, it didn't materialize, and we ended up with very small. I think that the right approach would be to reduce as recommended. You're at the size of twenty, as Nicole points out, it's very average, there's a teacher and an A in these classrooms, okay? And then if we get to a number, say, if, you know, we have to determine what that number is, like we do other classes, if we get to a number of sixty-six, sixty-eight, whatever, you know, it would be sixty-five, then add back in. But I think the likelihood that happens is less than, and maybe it will. I cannot predict enrollment, obviously.
So can I ask one question on this? If we're gonna use that formula, or you're gonna use that formula?
Well, I'm just suggesting.
Right, no, I, I get that. But we have the sixth and seventh at Florence right now, with twenty-six and twenty-seven kids per class. If we go by that theory, and we go by looking at the other towns and the average student population in the other towns, we should have teachers for each of those classes to bring that down. If we're looking for complete parity between the towns, and if that's what's fair.
Well, the middle school...
And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, in the middle school, we have held very tightly in the last, so our middle school model, as you know, is four teachers, academic teachers. We've held tightly in the last several years to a hundred and eight kids. In other words, where the group in the middle school goes above one oh eight, we have added a teacher. We've done the Hail twice over the last five years, and Sawyer Woods over the last five years.
But still like twenty-six and twenty-seven of the kids regardless of what that is, that's what, that's what the real numbers are.
Well, if it averages, very average.
And that's, and that's what was sent out to us from the principal, or the class reports from the principal.
Yeah, it's, but I'm saying is, that's how we've done the middle school. The individual classes may, because you can't divide directly by four for various reasons all the time, so the individual classes, but there's only a hundred and, you know, two or three kids in that grade. It's not a hundred and eight. If you're a hundred and eight, if you had a hundred and eight with four teachers, you may have some classes of twenty-nine, okay, and that sum of twenty-five. So, but the rate doing, and again, you can change this in any way you want. You can bring a number to any level you'd like. Obviously, it's an expensive one. But all I'm saying is, it's not quite like kindergarten, and there is no specific formula. Generally, again, we've stuck around twenty-two for kindergarten, that's been our number. But, you know, because of the fact we have the teacher and the A's in the class, we have stuck around twenty-two. It's not, it's not guaranteed. But the middle school is different, and we have stuck very religiously in the one oh eight in the middle school.
Well, I get what that number is, but the number, again, if we're gonna talk parity, and that's gonna be part of the argument, then we need to talk twenty-six, twenty-seven kids and parity. Because, you know, we've got Lancaster where there's kids that are eighteen in the class, and then we got Stowe, which is about twenty in the class.
We got Lancaster with fourteen and fifteen.
Okay, so the bottom line is, there's, there's, I'm talking parity, and I know what you're talking about, and I don't dispute what you're saying, but if we're gonna bring parity into this conversation, then we need to truly bring parity into this conversation. Otherwise, we need to reframe that conversation in how we're going to justify getting rid of one of the teachers in kindergarten, which I'm not okay with.
So please understand that I am off of parity, okay? I'm not trying to talk to you all in parity, okay? All I'm saying to you is, in general, in my ten years here, okay, when we've had sixty kids in kindergarten, it's three classes. If it gets to a higher level, it's more. We, in the middle school, the high end has been one oh eight. When it's over one oh eight, okay, we have added a teacher. Now, you're right about the low end of the middle school. And I think that's a subject that's gonna have to be discussed very carefully here over the next couple of years, because we have some real small classes headed towards the middle school. We have resisted reducing, recommending reductions of the four-person team because of the way it works so perfectly at each school, okay? But from a total class size point of view, that may be something we need to consider for reasons going forward, for the same equity parity reasons you're talking about. It changes the structure dramatically in the middle school if we do it. But you're right, and as you get smaller and smaller classes, there's one class coming up in a couple of years that has sixty, sixty-one kids in one of the towns. If that class theoretically gets to eighth grade, those class sizes are eleven or twelve.
Right, no, I get that, but we're, we're talking class size versus cohort. And I think that's what we're coming down with, is that the parity thing is, is class size, whereas your one oh eight is cohort. So I don't think they're interchangeable, actually.
I understand what you mean, Michael.
Well, it's the, it's the whole gla- it's the class, right? It's their, it's their class, the eighth grade.
No, I think he's saying, can I, can I just...
Sure.
I think what he's talking about is in the middle, so in elementary, you're all split up into individual classes, your class.
Right.
In middle school, it doesn't work at all that way. It's different. In middle school, you have sections and you disperse, and you have a different group for English, social studies, math, science, and Spanish. So there's five teachers, in other words. And depending on the number, like for instance, the sixty-four that's coming down from grade four in Bolton, that is gonna be extremely small class sizes to take sixty-four kids and break them up into large class sizes. Last year, Lancaster had a dip, and it went down to seventy-five. But then we looked and it went back up in the nineties and in the eighties in the years to follow. So we had the discussion and we decided, you know, because the next couple of years that follow, it's not worth changing the entire structure of the middle school because of one year of class depth. Now, I think if what we're talking about specifically right now isn't that, it's specifically about kindergarten, right?
Right.
Right, but to that same theory, what's gonna happen the next year? And if we're taking reductions to bring back and, you know what I mean? And now you're, you're ramping up a new teacher, et cetera?
No.
No? Really?
We've been, we've been putting teachers in and out based on the need. And so if, if you get three and it, and it does bump up, and you've got twenty and you've got more, kindergarten depth, they're putting them back in.
Okay.
And it's not like they usually, they move them from place to place.
I'm totally with you, but I'm still on parity then.
You know, you can't talk parity because you...
I know you can't talk parity. That's why, that's why, is you can't talk parity, so...
You can't, see, because what, parity meant different things at different times. At one time, it meant if Stowe has five teachers, then Bolton fits five teachers, and Lancaster has five teachers. What happened is Stowe had twenty-four kids in a class, Bolton had eleven.
Right.
Lancaster had fifty.
Right. Sam, I, I can, I'm about efficiencies on this, so if it's gonna be, then you, you determine what's, what's the parameter for the class, the class size, and you can do class sizes.
So, so can I ask a question for a second? Do we have any retirements coming K two anywhere in the district?
Yes, this would not be a layoff.
Guys, listen.
It's not a layoffs.
Okay, so it's not a layoff? That was my question, was do we have any retirements K two? Because I just asked Kurt about the certification, and it's usually kindergarten through second grade for early education. Where, where do you, do, well, you probably can't say if it's not been announced. But you do have a K or K two retirement?
I have to look at the list. I, I, but I would be extraordinarily surprised if, if this would end up in a layoff. I just, from, I've had conversations, the principal concurs with the recommendation here. And so no, no one has mentioned that as an issue, so I just, I can look at the list. I can look at the list right in front of me.
Okay.
I can look at the list, but I do not believe it would be a layoff.
All right, so, so let's, let's move that conversation forward. I still wanna hear, Kathy, you said you're not in favor of it?
Well, if, if we know that if it goes over a certain amount, if there's a tipping point, that we would put someone back in. Because given the current numbers in the other two towns and the number of teachers, you're looking at eighteen, between eighteen and nineteen kids in a class. So twenty would be right around that. But if it went too much higher, as long as we know that we could put in, then I could live with that.
I could live with it too, and I could live with it if it's not a layoff also.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
And I'd say that if it were Stowe, and I'd say that if it were Lancaster.
Yep.
Okay. Kathy, how do you feel?
I'm fine.
You're fine with it?
I'm...
And Mark?
Yeah, I'll go along with reducing that decision.
Can I make a suggestion, Lauren?
Yep.
That as we go through these things, whatever our decision is that, that included will be the rationale for the decision. So if we decide to reduce the classroom teacher at Sawyer because of projected reduction in kindergarten, that we make a statement to the effect that three teachers would give a proper class size at this point of twenty, which is around what the class sizes would be in the other two towns.
So who's preparing that statement?
Do you want me to?
No, is that a school committee responsibility, or is that you guys?
I just think it should be explained.
No, that's, that's fair. And, yeah, because I think...
The decision.
I think, first of all, we never thanked George for putting this together. And I do, but I do think that, that some of the language needs to be tweaked, so that makes sense. Yeah, you know what, Personnel Lady, we'll work on it. So am I hearing that as long as this doesn't result in a layoff?
Or a class size greater than, what's the, what's the recommended class size for kindergarten? Twenty-two?
I don't know, contract, if it's twenty-two.
Yeah.
I mean, in your policies.
It's not in our policy, twenty-six.
For kindergarten?
I don't know.
Not kindergarten?
Well, it's a different... It's lower, no, it's okay. It is definitely lower than kindergarten.
You're gonna go to a kindergarten class size.
Maybe it's twenty-two, maybe it's twenty-two. I gotta believe that's what it is. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Neil, what do you thought? This is impacting our squad.
I like actually what Kathy had to say.
Pardon?
I like what Kathy had to say with that, and, you know, I'm open-minded about that. I, I don't want parity in this conversation, because I don't think it belongs, and that's my whole point.
I don't either, because we didn't get it a few years ago.
That's what I'm saying. We're still, we've got the twenty-six, twenty-seven amen, that's still, that's the lack thereof, so... The... You got me, man.
Sorry.
I agree with Kathy on that. So if we can make sure that the numbers, if there's a tipping point, that we make sure that we add ahead to account for that tipping point. Maybe we get lucky and it would be a half-day or something like that that we could add, but I just don't want the kids to suddenly have, you know, I mean, it, it's tough at times, I mean, too many kids, you know, everywhere and...
And then conversely, a class of twelve kids is not a healthy class, right?
Yes, I mean, I have two children, but, I mean, twenty-five, twenty-six, I mean, herding cats, right? I mean, it gets, it gets...
At that age.
At that age, you know.
Okay. All right, so as long as, I'm hearing, as long as we're not removing a teacher from the district, okay? Um, the para due to enrollment in Hail, so my question on that one, George, is, is the sped director on board with that?
Yes.
She is.
Yes.
How do you feel about that, guys? Okay? Mark?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yep.
Neil?
Yes.
Nicole? And Lynn? Okay. All right, reorganization of the facilities office, this was, this was something that we, we talked about last week a little bit. George, thank you for that. Looking for the efficiency there. Kathy, how do you feel about that? You good? Mark?
Was there a conversation in Personnel about...
There was.
Yeah, and last time we talked about, this would have the part-time department assistant become a full-time administrative assistant. I don't, I would like to see the department assistant continue at full-time. At part-time, I mean, and recognize the full efficiency of the seventy-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, but, but you're, we're shuttling responsibilities.
I'd like to see what they are, because last week, it was mentioned that a full-time administrative assistant would assist the athletic director and the food services director.
We're not adding that.
That's not in there.
I thought it was.
No.
They said they possibly could. They said they possibly could do that.
That is not what the recommendation is.
That was not the recommendation.
But what does the possibility mean? So are we making a full-time job?
I was at, I, no, I was, I was asked that, if, if there was a full-time position there, could that person also help out in either one of those positions?
And? Could.
Could they?
Right, anything's possible. You heard the presentation on, uh, Monday evening?
Monday night?
Yeah.
Monday evening?
Yes.
It was open.
You know, I, please be clear, these are budget reduction scenarios. These aren't really complete recommendations. These are ways that if we have to cut the budget, we cut the budget. I think we're better off the way it is now. I don't think we should make the reduction from an operational point of view. But from an operational point of view, if we do make this reduction, I think it's imperative that we add a full-time assistant, because there are management issues that the full-time person that we'd be reducing does that was gonna have to be done by someone, and I am very concerned about the efficiencies if we don't do that. And, and you, you heard Monday night, a lot of what the things are. I still think we have some efficiency issues by doing that, but there's just the management of the buildings, the events, the systems, the vendors, the contracts, the POs, things like that. A lot of that is done by this position we're eliminating.
Yeah, but you only have this position for two years, so maybe we need to step back in the facilities department and look at how it's structured and how it's managed. I mean, I'm not, I don't know, so I'm not.
Would you like me to address that?
Insert, no, no, I, no, you don't need to.
No, there's a, no, there's a reason for that, though, I think.
Yeah, but, but you don't need to, as I don't, I don't need, I don't need to go down there, I'm just offering it up.
But that's not a rat hole, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a.
Well, go ahead, you wanna share, so please, go ahead.
But before that, we had a custodian acting in that role to help manage the custodians. We were paying a stipend for it, so the statement was made, and it was my mistake, I guess, not to bring it out, that we added a seventy-four thousand dollar position, which we did not do. We, the net cost of this change was relatively minor when it occurred two or three years ago. So we did have the services of that position, so if we eliminate this position, the total staff count of this department is gonna be one less than it was.
But that one person isn't in the schools, and frankly, we did see in the staff climate survey that there are concerns in all of the schools with cleanliness. I mean, that was one of the things that came out of it, so I don't wanna go down all that, I'm just saying, if this person is in, if, he's not leaving the district, he's going back into the school, right?
I don't know that.
I thought that was the part of the discussion.
Well, I did ask, I did ask if there had been a reduction in, George, remember, if there had been a reduction in the custodial staff or in the vicinity of the time this position was created.
Well.
I, I have a feeling, though, we're not really ready to, to make a decision on this particular thing. Maybe we have some questions that we'd like to, to, um,
I, I, I guess I don't understand, how did we get to this point where the recommendation was made and now it's being pulled back? I don't get it.
Yeah, why did you make it?
I was asked to cut further amounts of money for the budget. I don't think it's the most efficient way to do it. I believe that we have to cut the budget, which I assume, I'll assume, I know we do, that it can be made in this manner. It's not my first choice. A lot of things are my first choice, but if we are going to make a change or reduction, I'm saying we can make it. But I think, but I would, but if we're going to make it, understanding there's already some reluctance about it, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to allow us to make it as stated, not further admit.
Kathy?
I raised the issue of the position when it was added in two thousand fourteen in light of the fact that two librarians and two technology, um, teachers had been cut from the middle schools. And I questioned why, when those positions had been cut, why this position was added and those positions had not been restored. That, I, I generated the concern. I agree with Maureen that perhaps we look at a reorganization or look at how, um, responsibilities can be, um, reorganized, dispersed, or whatever. I don't, I, so I question the need of the custodial manager position. I would want to know what a full-time person would do. Um, I don't know many districts where the athletic director has his or her own, um,
Admin.
admin, uh, nor do I know many districts where the food service director has their own admin. So that is my reluctance and I, I remember that being mentioned. Um, if that's erroneous, um, then my apologies, but I would wanna know what other, um, responsibilities this person would take on, um.
But we have two, two, two pieces of this.
Yes.
And, and one is the recommendation to, to step down a manager into a, um, a custodian position, which seems like we need more custodians because we've got people getting hurt, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then we've got the, but there's some work that's being done through the current structure that's gonna be moved into other parts of that organization, but then there's gonna be functions that aren't the need a home and it makes sense that you would offset.
Like one of those AR.
Yeah, but we don't get to do that.
Well.
But right now, it's only what is done there now. I mean, the things that Kurt talked about last week are potentials of a way to meet other needs.
Kurt?
But this recommendation is simply for the operation of the facilities department. It doesn't, as of right now, I, I'm not, I obviously am in no position to speak for what's done with, you know, clerical positions in the future, okay? But right now, as planned and recommended, does not consider any support of either the athletic director or the food services director.
Okay. Kurt, what do you think?
And it would be looking at, um, what the person who's currently in the custodial supervision job, what sort of clerical things does he currently do that won't get done since he's gone? And can a half-time person maintain that?
That's all I'm asking you to consider.
So where does that leave us?
By which you mean, half an additional administrative assistant in replacement for his full-time job?
Exactly. So, is it providing you with a listing from what would have to be given up?
What's covered or what's not, what, I mean, respectfully, there may be things that this individual's doing that are nice to haves but aren't critical or needed. I don't know, I, I can't.
Well, I think that's what Bill tried to explain Monday night, and maybe we weren't successful, and maybe we can have him come back here.
Well, George, I did hear it, and a lot of what I heard was administrative that I'm thinking, and I wrote a note, it was like, there's no reason an admin can't take on a lot of that.
That's what the recommendation is, that's my recommendation. That's exactly my recommendation.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
But Kathy, what?
I'm only one person, that's my opinion. Everybody else?
What do, what do you people think before I get, I don't get, can't get myself out of this hole? Well, Nicole?
I'm okay with this.
You're okay with it? And, and Lynn, what do you think about this?
I'm a little confused about the exchange that you guys had, so the administrator?
You need to read the dir-
I read it, I read it.
Okay, so are you, does that, yes or no?
This is, this is George's recommendation, I'm, I'm a little confused, but, um,
No, you can do it.
I mean, yeah, let's, yeah, you go.
The custodial manager position would be cut.
Yep.
It's currently at seventy-four thousand dollars. The fif- twenty-four, my assumption is that twenty-four thousand dollars of that seventy-four thousand dollars would go into a full-time administrative assistant, yeah.
So making a, a half a whole?
That's right. She's currently at a half, would make her a whole.
If, if,
Right.
For reasons just full, it probably would be a different person, okay, for reasons.
I don't know.
Well.
But that, that's really not material to the discussion.
Right. Neil, what are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement to your suggestion.
And Kathy?
Very similar.
Thank you.
The place that I don't have clarity is what, what possibly significant things that are undertaken by this individ- individual would not be done, and I don't think we've actually.
They'll be done, they'll be done by different people at different times.
So it's, I, I personally don't have clarity on that, um.
But I think he just, I think George just answered it. Okay, we're moving on. Increase the budget offset for the health grant, if anybody says no to this. I think we're good on that. So I think there needs to be some clarity on this one. It says decrease NRHS salaries, but it's not really a decrease.
Decrease or the increase?
So it's a, there was a request and you're just dropping the request.
Partial drop.
Yeah, okay.
Could explain that just a little bit?
Yes, the, uh, the principal put in a request for point twos in all the departments, we're gonna have department heads. And after some discussion with him, uh, he feels he can manage the departments even with, even if the department head proposal goes through, he can feel, he feels he can manage the departments without the additional point twos, all except for science and math. And it is, in, in his, um, initial proposal, in the case that not absolutely required, there's, you know.
He did, and he, when we had the initial conversation, he talked about that before he even put a proposal together. So this is a, from Perry's perspective, he's in with it.
So I'm interested to know, better understand why, how he's going to, i- i- if it isn't his plan or desire to have these department chairs teach one less class?
Yes.
And where does the extra slack come from?
Enroll it.
Is he gonna collapse some classes in order to get a teacher equivalent?
I don't want to speak to, we said the enroll would be slightly less if I, if I deal with the class schedule, he would be able to dissolve it in all of the departments except for math and science. Those are the two, he said he can't absorb, looking at the schedule.
So would it be reasonable to assume that probably he will find a couple of sections, he, he'll be able to collapse into one so that he can get a teacher class in order to get that time pushed, pushed over to department?
The, 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 yes, those two issues, yes.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
All right, so what's the, what's your?
I'm, I'm, I'll go with it then.
Okay, so you're good with that. Um, decreasing operations. Large increases in the ops budget for, oh, this was, um, we had already talked about this when the principals came in and then last week. I think everybody felt good with that because that was around uniforms.
The marching band startup.
Yeah, the startup without the plan, so we need the plan before we do the startup. Thoughts?
He just sent it to, the plan, so you'll get, you'll, I will get that on student, for your cruise.
Thank you. No.
I thi- I think he's good with what?
Put it on the docket for next year, the rule out.
I think he's, I think he's, I think he's,
He's okay with it.
He's all, he made it very clear, it's fine, but you do now have a plan.
Good, then we could use it for next year, and that's, that's goodness.
Ten in the folder.
Thank you, Dr. Graham.
I just got it, so.
All right. The facilities salaries, extra custodian budget, so why don't you tell me what this is, George, again?
Uh, just looking over the budget, um, that we had, we, we actually, we actually budgeted an additional custodian. I don't wanna say error, but, uh, we budgeted an additional custodian, so if we left that in, it would actually be increasing the size of the department by one.
So you can do it?
We've had a long, we've had some long-term absences, so therefore, we had a budget for someone who's on long-term leave and also for everyone who is here, it's, uh, wasn't due, so we bud- so ultimately, it's an extra custodian that, that is authorized overall. You know, we do have those challenges of backfilling custodians a lot, but this would have been an increase to the budget, I, I didn't realize that until afterwards, so that's why it's.
Oh, so this?
This would have been an additional new position, which I was not intended to be.
Do they feel that they need it, or? No.
Uh, well, no, I think they probably always feel they need it, but it would be a new position, I mean, they don't have it now.
Okay, so this was a oversight. That way you don't have to say error.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. I mean, I understand why it happened, it just, it was something, it got lost in the detail that we, I picked up on the secondary review.
Okay, thank you for that. So I think the next, the next one, decreased tech operations, removes, oh, this was the, so I'm gonna change what this says and use the not, not bring in scanning and archiving, HR.
We're not gonna bring that in this year.
Yeah, so that makes sense. You guys, you know what?
Actually, can I just quiz you a little bit?
Yeah.
What, what would be the benefit of going ahead and having the equipment and, um, moving that forward this year, what we're?
I mean, I think it's a progressive thing to do, I mean, I think you wanna get your HR files stored digitally as time moves on. We have, you know, four or five big file cameras of them. Our old files are, you know, not in, like many places, our old files are not perfectly in good positions. You know, they'd be in boxes and piles and, you know, in closets with mice and stuff like that. So, I mean, the desire would be to eventually do that type of organization, but given the budget crunch and that type of thing, I would recommend that at this point we reduce it.
That's some, one of those things, you're, again, looking at building your budget for next year. You put, as you start doing your needs assessment, to put that in the forefront.
I don't think, given a lot of different things, we're probably, the positions are easily movable anyway, so I don't think it's too powerful.
So it's significant for not crisis level of one.
Yeah, we don't do it, it's just a matter of when you start a new operation, when you become progressive.
Is this in-house or are we gonna outsource this?
It's in-house, but some of the archives would be outsourced. There's a lot of, you know, hands, but it's the other.
Okay, we're moving on, so we're good with that? Um, and then the next three.
This was just a double.
Those are duplicates. Yep.
So, that's good. George, that's it. George, thank you. What?
You got it to thousand.
You did awesome and thank you for your diligence and for scrubbing that out, so I think we're in good shape. There, the question, just to wrap it up, the question on, Kurt's gonna talk to Kathy or get us all information on the facilities, the facilities office reorg. Oh, you wanted the list and Kurt said he would give it to you.
Yeah, I just, well, you made a suggestion that there'd be an eye toward looking at what the functions are and looking at reorganizing that way to see what.
What efficiencies you can drive out of it.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Out of the facilities department. I think what Ca- what we're saying is if, if, if this happens
Right.
to ensure that the work is, the, the work that needs to get done is getting done, if there's work that, and I don't know, that can be shuffled to different locations, that this is appropriate. And Kathy, I think, said, why do we need the full-time?
All right, so you wanna, just while I'm hearing Kurt, you wanna outline of what that full-time admin person would be?
Well, what does the part-time person do now and then what would the additional responsibilities be?
And then what would be added?
Thank you.
And is everything covered that this position of being lost, is that all that stuff covered?
Well, it, does it need to be?
Well, it might have to be parsed out.
Right?
Well, it might have to be parsed out a little.
Right, I think that's what.
As long as it sits somewhere.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Is this where general budget questions can be asked?
Coming up, coming up, coming up. You know what, Neil? Yes. I know, does everybody, first of all, does everybody have general budget questions? Kathy, Neil, Kathy? Jones? Mark, I mean, sorry.
Probably.
Lynn?
I'm tired.
Okay, do you have questions?
Not right now.
Nicole? Okay, Neil, go ahead.
Um, so I actually have a ton, but I'm gonna start them for the next budget cycle.
Okay.
About that, huh? But I do, I boil things down to basically four key questions that I think I have. So when I went through this entire budget that was put together, um, which I appreciate, I did not see, and perhaps it's something I overlooked, but we've got facilities, tech, sped, all these different departments are broken out, except for central offices. And to me, that's a big, like, question mark, like, that's a huge part of the organization that's in the shadows somewhere. So I have no vision or perspective into that, um, sitting on the finance subcommittee or.
Why do you mean like central office? I mean, most of it is broken out.
It's not broken out. If you look at system-wide expenses, facilities, we go through all the various things, but central offices, and if I missed that, then.
Yeah, it's system-wide.
System-wide.
Well, system-wide covers a whole lot of stuff.
But those are the budgets managed by the central office. And those, and then you go to the salary composite, set, system-wide, those are the salaries assigned in central office. The only so, the only salaries quote in the central office are the superintendent and assistant superintendent and the central office clerical staff. Everybody else is broken out of every department.
Right, so the central office clerical staff, et cetera, is just put under sort of like a moniker then of?
It's a, the central office cler- yes.
So whether it's, whether it's, uh, somebody who's a CPA is also admin, they're all grouped together?
Yeah, right, the moniker chip.
Okay, so.
So maybe it's, it's this separate position, you sort of.
That doesn't give me a good perspective is to know that there's fifteen people in the finance department for central offices, which I know there aren't, verse, verse two, um, on that, and.
I mean, we certainly can break it out with the central office, but. I mean, we certainly can break it out with the central office, but there's only seven positions.
So would you like each department broken out?
Yes, I'm just saying in the future, I would love to see that, central offices, and here you go, system-wide expenses, non-salary account budget detail is what that's listed as, so.
Right, but there's no real central office expenses other than system-wide things, I mean, except for a few office supplies.
And personnel, and so if you're breaking out the various departments within central offices, that just, that tells us something, right?
But if you go to the salary composite line, and I'm not, I don't wanna believe with this, okay?
Yeah, 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 this is for future, this isn't even for this year.
But I just, but I just don't know, if you go to the salary composite, you look at the very first one, central office, that's all the employees are who are assigned to central office, other than the assistant superintendent, the seven people.
Which was the central office.
Okay, you go to the salary composite, I apologize.
I didn't say anything about the page, I was just. No, but whereabouts is it then, is it in the front or in the back?
No, it's af, it's, it's after the revenue page, right after the staff change page, there's a page called. There's a page called salary composite.
Okay.
Okay, and that's for all, that's for the FTEs for each department.
George, show me your screen.
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, so whereabouts is it then?
Go back to the top of it, the very top of that. Bill, next page.
Still on the blue page?
Yep, there you are, right?
New staff requests.
Okay, that's the new staff request, right?
District summary.
So keep going. And then you are.
District, alright, okay, Ian, see the?
District salaries.
So that, again, I apologize for the page number issue, so.
Oh, that's helpful.
So like I said, there's no problem breaking out those separate positions, okay? But I'd say generally, the philosophy has been, and maybe we can do it in our budget book going forward, new format or whatever, but the philosophy has been, you know, we break it out as much as we break anything else out. So that, that's the reason, so I mean, we have, I mean, I can tell you what those positions are, have to do that.
No, it's, that's all good, but at town meeting last year, that was a question that a lot of people had, because everything was just put in as salary and central, everything was grouped all together, and a lot, and people walked away with, it was a very, as you know, volatile year, and people walked away with a lot of questions about what that comprised. You know what I mean? PD and tuition reimbursements, I see, are separate. And this has led to, so, okay, so we had textbook in PD that was separate in high school. I also saw that there's a lot of tuitions that substantially come out, the warrant coming in, there was quite a few coming in. My question is, 'cause that's a lot of money going out. Are we making sure, or is there any requirement that the tuitions that are being, being done are job-specific? Or are we just allowed to do?
So Kurt needs to answer that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the tuitions that we have that are going out, that are being paid and so forth, substantial, are they job-specific for, in, in the summertime? 'Cause I'm looking at various things like the textbook in PD, how that was separate, then I saw tuitions that were over here, and I'm signing warrants for.
Are you talking about this, the summer program tuition?
Are you talking about?
Sure. So I'm talking about tuition reimbursements for faculty.
Okay, that took courses and so forth.
That took courses, are they required to be job-specific? So in other words, PD and so forth and tuition, to me, that would all sort of fall under one huge thing in a way.
Well, I can just, I can talk to, my experience is that usually, there's a form that is submitted prior to taking the course.
Is that in this district?
It, it, there is a policy and a procedure in this district where they, you submit a, a form that it gets approved by the HR and forwarded to the superintendent to sign off. And in most districts, you don't get reimbursed until you've taken the course, and then you submit your grade, which is usually you have to have an A or a B to get the reimbursement.
And so what is our practice?
There is a policy.
Yes?
Well, Unit A has a committee.
Right, Unit A, the teachers that have, they have a, a committee that goes through.
Right, the committee, Unit A has a committee of two management, two teachers that have to approve all requests before the class is taken. I don't recall, I don't send them to committee anymore, 'cause there's a grade requirement, but they have to, it has to be a graduate course, and they get reimbursed at the end of the course, as Kurt described. Unit C has a similar thing, they only get seventy-five hundred dollars a year. That is submitted and approved by B, again, it has to be, it does not have to be graduate.
The total of Unit C.
Total of Unit C.
No, not each one. I saw the look on your face like.
Fifty-seven thousand dollars total for Unit A, seventy-five hundred dollars.
So that's fifty-seven for Unit A, seventy-five for Unit C, and then we have, we have the administrative PD as well.
Well, the non-union PD.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
And that comes out of the line, the different line item.
And so all those courses that we're assigning off and so forth have been pre-approved and signed off by either you or this organization?
Either A and Unit C, correct.
But it's, he's talking about Unit A and Unit C, he's not talking about.
I'm not talking about.
What?
I'm not talking about anything other than Unit A and Unit C.
Yes, so just make sure you understand that, there's Unit A, there's Unit C, and then there's non-union.
Well, are they getting reimbursements, they're not getting reimbursements too, though?
Who?
Non-union?
Non-union?
It's in the contracts.
In the contract.
And I guess, so that's approved, or just you can?
Do you wanna talk to that?
Well, we were, we just had a policy.
He's got a smile on his face, okay.
Yes, there is, there is a policy in place.
Okay.
Which they are supposed to have pre-approval, similar, and previously, some things, from my understanding, that there is no backup material that shows that was pre-approved.
For who, for all?
No, I've only seen one, and I have already spoken to your legal counsel, and things are now in place that that procedure will be followed.
So we did have a policy, and now we're?
You have, you, my understanding is you've always had a policy.
We do.
Oh, okay, that's good.
We just discussed this in policy. This was, this is a policy that we've been discussing in, in our policy.
Yeah, but we don't know, we don't know about the approval process and what goes through with the policy.
Right.
That's not into the policy.
So what the policy says is not what was followed, it's what Kurt said.
The policy says we pay that out, but it doesn't say shall, you know, that, that who's approving what, and if it's being approved, then it is to be job-specific, 'cause we've actually been discussing job-specific for the policy.
Okay. You're right, we did not discuss job-specific, but we did.
No, we did, we discussed job-specific, 'cause it's not listed in the policy, but I'm asking how it's being paid out. Is it being job-specific or not?
Okay, alright.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, it's a difference between protocol and policy, again, a practice of policy, a practice of policy.
Exactly.
Okay, moving on, Neil, you had another question, he's gonna finish his up and then we'll.
Okay, so we have a history of budget requests which are coming in on the budget, and I really appreciate that, FY16 amount, requested amount, and what, what was actually paid out, et cetera, but there's no reconciliation. So for instance, audit services, system-wide, I'm just picking one at random, requested thirty-five thousand, voted thirty-five thousand for audit services. How much do we actually spend? Are these bills that we're getting on the front end, and are they actually thirty-five thousand dollars even? And if not, what are we doing with the little nickels and dimes here? Because Target makes a lot of money sending it to charities if you wanna round up the dollar, and I'm just wondering, that over time, that's gonna add up, where does that go, how does that work, and where's the reconciliation? 'Cause we don't, that's the one thing.
I don't know if I understand the question.
So you recognize, we're, we're giving fifty-four million dollars, whatever it is, last year. How much was actually spent? And not like what we do to do year-end transfers, but how much actually gets spent out of the certain things? So maintenance is asking for fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of maintenance, how much did they actually do? Did they do thirty-six thousand dollars, or did they do actually fifty-seven thousand dollars even?
Well, that's in my, that's in, no, sorry. That's in the executive summary, I agree with you, it's not like, when you go to the individual departmental blocks, which I guess is what you're looking at, and you see these things listed out as thirty-five thousand dollars. You'll see, what's the, so you'll see in the case of audit I happen to know, that is under contracted services, central office, system-wide, okay? Not central office, system-wide. So if you go to contracted services, system-wide, you see it there, what the actuals spent with FY15s. Obviously FY15 is the last year we have actuals, because we're in the midst of FY16, okay? So you can see what was spent in total to the very dollar from that line item, okay? You can't see how it was broken down, in other words, you can't see whether it was thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety dollars on audit or like that, we don't break it down.
But I can't see that, we can't, the school committee can't see that, so we're voting on a budget that we don't know was actually used the previous year. But we're voting on X number of dollars we're increasing this by, and all I'm saying is that when you typically do something, you've got a balance sheet, you've got P&Ls, you've got some sort of reconciliation that you're using with an organization to show that you've spent, you've, you've asked, you've spent. And, and that's all I'm saying, is, is missing, and I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat here, I'm asking this question. And it leads specifically to facilities, because I look here and I get confused, because I look and it says, you know, maintenance projects small. And then it says maintenance projects, and then, and then it says, which we have to discuss in a little bit, maintenance for the particular schools, but they don't align. Like if we look at the particular schools, and we look at what's being spent in Bolton, for instance, and we compare that to, Noshova Regional High School, we compare one with what this maintenance report is here, and there's a difference of over, if I'm not mistaken, thirty or forty thousand dollars, and it's the same thing, so I'm getting confused on that. And then I look at smaller repairs maintenance, I look at, when you do a project, usually it's all-in, and I'm not sure how that's being defined here, because all-in would be plumbers, electricians, everybody's included, but we have a separate breakout for plumbers, electricians, and everything else going on here, so, and then we have separate breakout for boiler, and it just goes on and on and on, and I'm really, there's a big ball of wax here that seems to, to almost, in my mind, and I'm sure it's not the case, but in my mind, have a lot of redundancy, and I'm just wondering what's going on.
I'm not, I'm not sure I completely understand the question, so you'll have to forgive me, okay? But all I can do is point you back to the executive summary and show you, that that shows you the actual amount spent in these line items. I agree, when you go to the actual division budgets, okay? Which list, which list a representative of things under each line item and approximate costs of those things, okay? You don't have the historical information there, you only have the last year's requests there, I guess that's what you're referring to. And there is a lot of, not a lot, I don't wanna say a lot, this is not fair, in some departments more than others. There is some, there is some flexibility that is undertaken during the year. We don't necessarily spend exactly as, as budgeted, I mean, nobody knows that, but you can see with the total amount in that line is spent by the executive summary. If you wanna see it in more detail, certainly we know what we spent on each line item, but it was gonna become a reporting issue as to how we produce it. The current forms, we can't produce that, okay? Down to that level of detail. Could we, you know, could we present, could we produce a, I mean, I can produce a line-by-line annual summary of what was spent in FY15 as for each line item in the entire budget, and you can see, you know, it's gonna be this thick, and it's gonna be in accounting format, but, you know, it's the warrants that you do every week, I mean.
No, I'm with you, and but that's, but you know, the.
So I mean, that's the thing. But I mean, I think, I, I think the school committee certainly has to get a level of comfort as to how far they wanna drill down to this budget, okay? Whether you wanna drill down to every item we buy?
Nope.
Or you're happy with every general category?
Nope, I'm just looking for understanding of the various, the various things, so I'll give you a specific, George, so I can be specific. So there's a thing that's coming out tonight that we're gonna take a look at, that says Noshova High School scheduled maintenance. And it's a breakout of total projects, total costs and everything, and then it's the FY 2017 ask. I'm looking at the total at the bottom, it says three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Then I go over here to facilities, and I take a look.
Slow down a little bit, so we can keep up this, too. I gotta get in too, actually, so.
Noshova High School scheduled maintenance.
Yeah, I know, I just wanna get the flow, I know, I know.
No, I'm gonna slow for everybody. Okay, yes, am I being insulting without going?
No, no, you're not being insulting.
Yes, I drive my kids nuts this way, so.
Well, you're driving us both stupid.
Alright, follow the worm down the hole, okay? So, two thousand, do you have that, so it's tonight that's coming up?
Yes.
Okay, scheduled maintenance, FY 2017. You look at the bottom of the total, three hundred and ten thousand. Then I refer to the budget that came out the other day, which it says facilities, and then it says non-salary account budget detail. And I look under Noshova Regional High School, and it says two hundred and nineteen thousand for FY16, and nothing listed on FY17. So this is all the FY17 stuff that's being plugged in, is that, is that correct? So there's a hundred and?
Yes, but again, I would, so you're looking at the facilities tab, is that what you're looking at?
Yep.
Okay, and then you go down to the scheduled maintenance?
So.
FY 216, yeah.
So if you look at, the next bottom line in that section says high school renovation projects, ninety-one thousand. And then you take the second line, which is NRHS, two nineteen, those two together will add up to three hundred and ten. On tonight's schedule.
Correct, and if you look at, and the difference of those is the ones he has in yellow and the ones he has in green.
And I'm perfectly good with that, except for, this is the point, we need to have that consistency throughout, because when you're reading one thing, and then you're reading another thing, it's telling a different story, if you know what I'm saying. And, and that's all, that's all I'm looking for, okay, is that when you look at it, it's just, again, it's, and I'm not gonna call it transparency, but I'm gonna call it visibility, you have that, that clear visibility what's going in, and when I'm looking at facilities, I'm not sure how they're grouping things, and I don't, I'm not sure what their criteria is for putting one thing or another, but they lift, they, they call it one thing here.
I, I understand, I agree, I think.
You know, and then it changes, so I'm trying to follow the, I'm trying to follow the dollar.
It is, it's a little, he has, he has a mental reason for doing it the way he does, and I appreciate that, but I agree that for the purpose of display, it would have been easier just to have three hundred and ten thousand in that line number two, because that would be more clear as to what's going on.
I don't care if he has twenty things, but as long as there's twenty things here that reconcile to that.
Where it's broken out here, of the, here of the big low three hundred and ten thousand dollar list, I would prefer, it would be easier just to have the three ten carried over, I agree. The rest of them should correspond, so I.
Neil, do you have more?
No, I'll call it quits at that point.
You sure? If you have additional questions, I want you to get.
Well, where does the dollars go, so the rounded dollars, I don't know if we got that clear?
Well, actually, I actually have to agree with you on that.
So if it's a thirty-six thousand dollar ask, at the, everything that we have here on the budget is rounded dollars. We give rounded dollars, if the rounded, again, it's coming down to the reconciliation at the end.
Goes to free cash, E and D.
That's what, excess and deficiency.
It goes to E and D.
Everything drains off to E and D at that point in time. And do we get a reconciliation sheet as school committee to understand how everything's draining off? Again, I'm just talking visibility, how everything is draining off from there to E and D.
Certainly can give you a fourth quarter financial report that shows what the balances are in Chicago, no problem.
Which is perfect, I mean, that's the case, and I'm gonna go back to the PD where we had a hundred and three thousand dollars that was in PD, and then that was pulled back, and visibility-wise, it looks like that did not in fact drain to E and D at that, at that. I, I don't know, remember that went cut from one oh three to fifty-three for the ask, did that extra money?
The one oh three is a budget for this year, and you think the fifty-three is an ask for next year?
Right.
Okay, so that's just the administrative decision to ask for less, but anything that's not spent on P and D, the hundred and three, drains to free.
Alright, I'm following on that.
But that wouldn't ever go to E and D, because it never matured that. To the fifty-three, they didn't, they might not have asked for what they got last year, they might have just asked for less, so.
Well, they asked for more, so it was twenty-nine, then up to one oh three, and then.
But that's why.
But just because they did that doesn't mean that they didn't use it, and it went to E and D, and they just are gonna ask what they used for last year, they might have had a big ask last year, and now they have a little ask this year. The only thing that goes to E and D is what's left.
Right, but we're saying might, they might have had an ask and so forth, but do we get a reconciliation at the end of the year? That's all I'm looking for. Are you following me on that? I, I, I'm really not being crazy guy here.
I think what you're asking for is if somebody asked for a hundred and nine thousand, and they only used fifty-three, you wanna see that they only used fifty-three, and you wanna ask for some more.
He wants to know where the balance went.
That's exactly right, I want an oh fifty-three. No, no, I want an oh fifty-three, so if they spent fifty-three and they asked for one oh five, I want it, I want a reconciliation so that we're looking at, is it, I'm, Kurt, Dr. Bates, I'm going to default to you. Is this unrealistic or crazy what I'm asking for? It's, I'm just asking for the reconciliation for accounts to line up so that we take it to the next step, and then that's good, that's all free cash, and when we say, okay, we're gonna audit this, and audit is a random sampling of various things, and it's completely dark to us, and they put a stamp on it, but we're responsible for the budget.
Well, the good point is, you just brought it up, it's in the audit.
But, but you know what, if it's here during the budget process, everyone in town can look at it, we can all, everyone, I can look at it, I can, I don't have to hunt and peck for it, nor should anyone.
I understand, Neil, but this is a fifty-four million dollar. I understand, Neil, but this is a fifty-four million dollar budget with many, many, many line items and many, many, many sub-line items. Just from a reporting practicality point of view, I can't report in an easy, any easy way that the average person, even with a great budget book, okay? You're not going to find any great budget book that reports every line, every item spent for. That's the only, I mean, I just can't do that. Can we make it better? I'm sure we can, we can take your ideas and try to, you know, make it more clear. I certainly want to make you feel like it's clear, but it just, I mean.
Why can't we do that?
Well, 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 can, well, do we have to?
Well, we do do it though, I mean, I don't want to.
Do we have to solve this right now?
No, probably not.
Right, I think you have to.
No, I'm not being, I'm not minimizing your request. And I think that Kurt has already said that he agrees with it. But I don't know that we're not going, that we're not going to be able to resolve and move forward.
Finance subcommittee, maybe talk about how we can report in a way that makes it easier to reconcile.
Well, we can do it the same way we do now, we can have sixty-eight page sales strategy.
All right, you guys are going to do that in finance subcommittee, we're done, we're moving on. Neil, good. We're moving on, you guys are doing that in finance subcommittee.
Okay.
Kathy.
Okay. Excuse me. I have some questions about non-union salaries. And so, I'm going to be looking at the budget expenditures section, um, one, two pages in. So, mark that. And then, I am going to be looking in the section, referring to the section appendix C, probably halfway in, starting with district salary summaries. So, those are my two points of reference.
District salary summary.
Summary, yep. So, the first one is under budget expenditures.
Two pages in.
Yep, so, let's start with the facilities. And on the page behind that is sped. So, my question has to do with the percent increases for facilities department salaries. So, on that page, it says five point six five increase.
Yes.
For sped administration, on the next page, it says five point one four increase.
Yes.
So, if I hang on to that.
Yep.
And then flip to district salary summaries. And I go down to, um, facilities department salaries, that's the third category down. It says facilities department salaries FY sixteen, four point zero FT, oh, those are the numbers there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the percentage increase is, is back in the first part, correct?
Yes.
So, did we talk about what the non-union salary increase would be?
Yeah, we didn't talk about it, it's, it's in the book, it's recommended, proposed, in the book, at two percent.
But what does this mean?
What is what?
Five point six five is more than two percent.
Well, I don't know the specific answer about the specific budget, okay? But some of it is because of the change in the power loans.
No, but this is the recommended increase for FY seventeen.
Right, but the FY sixteen salaries were likely in that particular line item higher than the FY sixteen budget. So, you build the actual FY seventeen salaries, they're going to be a higher percentage point than it was budgeted, or paying higher than budget for FY sixteen.
All right, so maybe I'm, I just don't understand. But FY sixteen budget, facilities department salaries, three hundred and four thousand dollars, two percent of that, isn't that what you look at?
No, because, good question, no. That's, no, it's not what we look at, it's not how we increased the budget. The budget number that you see in all the salary requests.
Yeah.
Are built by, by the actual individual's salaries added up. So, we look at, at the database, personnel database, and we add the actual salaries as projected for FY seventeen.
So, if they were broken out as individuals, the four people that these represent.
Yes.
Their actual increase would only be two percent, is that what you're telling me?
From what they're being paid in FY sixteen. From what they're being actually paid in FY sixteen, correct.
But that included the additional.
Wait, no, no, wait, 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 wait. You had your turn, let me refuse to.
No, it's all easy.
Can you guys share the information, because we're not all.
No, I'm trying to understand, if we said two percent and not doing math with it at all, it just, it just looks like that doesn't represent two percent.
It represents five point six five percent.
And how did we get to that?
Those are the, those are the actual increase, those are the actual costs of the salaries.
So, what we budgeted was not what was spent.
That's correct.
So.
So, how do we offset that?
Wait, no, no, wait, 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 wait. So, what I, what I'm understanding, George, to say, if these were broken out by the four people whose salaries they represent, and you saw an increase from sixteen to seventeen for each individual in the percent column for each individual, that would be two percent.
No, it would be higher than two percent.
Right, but I, Kathy, the, the problem here, I believe, you know, just from intuition, a little bit of knowledge, just looking at this, I have not studied this particular climate, okay? But I will almost assure you that the salaries paid to these people in FY sixteen.
Yes.
Are higher than the present budget for FY sixteen.
Yes, no, no, I know that.
So, we don't have enough money budgeted. If we, I, I would suspect.
We did a spreadsheet that shows that their vehicle allowance was rolled in, and.
Right, but, and there's other issues here too, okay?
What?
Because FY seventeen, we are budgeting two percent for virtually everybody for an increase, okay?
Uh-huh.
I don't remember if, I don't know what we budgeted in FY sixteen, that I although was given in FY sixteen. So, I don't know what, you know, what the case would be. I look at FY fifteen, it's three oh seven, and it went down by, by three thousand dollars. So, I suspect there was a, some type of budgetary miscalculations from the provider.
How do we reconcile that?
What do you mean, how do we reconcile?
Well, that would show up if we had a reconciliation statement.
We have enough money in the.
Oh, come on, are you going to go back?
We have enough money in the, in the control line item to pay it. Or?
Or.
Because you don't do, you don't.
No, I get that, but if there's a specific reason.
No, I, I get what you're saying.
Or at the end of the year, we will, we will ask to transfer the money to balance the paid obligations.
Why are we not talking about?
How come we don't know what the obligations are?
I know what the obligations are. I can tell you what they are.
You know what they are? No, I, as far as that five percent, that, that increase that Kathy's talking about.
Yes, I don't understand the question.
I, I, did you not, did I not, maybe I'm.
No, go ahead.
Very well, maybe, maybe.
But maybe, wait, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, so.
Didn't you just ask, like, how, if this isn't two percent, but it's, and we're being told it's, it's five percent, it's two percent plus the roll in, in other things, but what are the other things?
But that doesn't, yeah, what are the other things?
That's, that's the question, what are the other things that's taking us to that?
The, nothing.
Okay.
What I mean by that is, this year, the budget shows three hundred, sorry, my book closes. Shows three hundred and four thousand dollars, okay? The actual obligation, from what I'm seeing, is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Because of the roll in of the vehicle allowances?
A combination of the roll in of the vehicle allowance, perhaps, I don't know. I didn't, I don't, A, don't handle this, and B, I don't remember. Perhaps last year.
Who does it?
What?
Who handles it?
I haven't finished what I didn't say, I was going to say.
I know, you just said I don't handle.
I know, but I was going to say, well, I don't handle.
Okay.
The contract negotiation for individual people, I don't handle. I don't know what increases were given to those people last year, okay? So, whatever the case may be. What I do know is I am, that our obligation for that department is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, and we also rolled money in for the.
And that includes that money.
Transportation.
Right.
Yet we still have a line item in which we're reimbursing people for, so isn't that double dipping?
No.
How is that not double dipping?
Well, can I clarify the question one, and then I'll answer question number two? Clarify question number one. We did roll it in for some people, as you said, the salary.
Mm-hmm.
And that is reflected in that, and that's where I just quoted you, of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, okay?
Yeah.
So, that's all in there. So, that is part of the reason. So, the reason the five point hundred percent there is because of the fact that we have more of an obligation than presently budgeted, okay? That is not unusual, okay? That's all I say, it's not unusual, it's happened in the past years. Almost every year when we do end of the year transfers, we do it to balance our salary line items. So, if you look at the fact that I can tell you we have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar obligation there, therefore, we will have to transfer money into that line item to meet our contractual obligations, okay?
For FY sixteen.
FY sixteen, thank you, yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, interrupt you. No, I don't understand that, because their vehicle allowance was budgeted for FY sixteen, but then it was just put into their salary. So, why, why is there not enough money?
It's a different line item, we'd have to transfer it.
We have to transfer from that.
But that's not.
No. Go ahead, what were we going to say?
I don't even know. But what I was going to say, Neil, as far as the double dipping, the reason there is no one's double dipping, obviously. Now, I don't know what people's individual contract arrangements are, so I shouldn't, no one's double dipping. The best of my understanding, again, I did not negotiate the contracts and change the contracts. Anybody's vehicle allowance was rolled for FY sixteen in the salary is by contract not being reimbursed this year, okay? But there are multitudes, in other words, I know that's the case for me, I gave it up for life, okay, as you know, all right? Other people gave it up for the year, I believe, I don't, I don't know that, okay?
Oh, no, 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 no.
It was sunsetting.
Oh, no, no, no.
The sun set on that.
Okay, so maybe you're right, I don't know.
Oh, no, Kathy, help me out here.
I wasn't involved.
I don't know, I just don't under, so if we're going to give a two percent raise, and all this, and all this money was rolled in, we're giving a bigger raise.
Right.
No, it's not a raise, because they already were getting the money.
They weren't getting a raise on the money.
It is a raise, because now, what happens is that money, now we are responsible for our favorite, we're OPEB.
Sure, but it's not a raise, they were already getting.
No, that is no raise, Mark, but when you give them a two percent raise on a larger sum of money, it's a bigger raise.
And it's an obligation to all of the towns over long term for benefits.
So, I had a five percent raise last year because my travel allowance was rolled in. Whether you say it's a raise or not, my salary is now five thousand or five percent higher.
Transportation is down by five thousand.
And if you're still getting reimbursed.
Same amount of money, it's not a raise.
No, because you, because you're not paying, hold on, you're not paying benefits and taxes.
Right.
But we're not talking about that, we're talking about.
No, thanks. No one is getting reimbursed, to my knowledge, that had, had that money rolled in.
Bye, ladies, I don't blame you.
No one who had salary rolled, is, is getting reimbursed and rolled the salary, it didn't reimburse this year. Mark is correct, it is total compensation does not change. The category of compensation changed from, from expense, I guess, to salary, okay? So, there is no OPEB on that, but there is retirement on that, okay? No OPEB, no repack on OPEB.
And, and, and future raises.
Theoretically, that's correct, yes.
No, practically, that's correct.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Future raises, okay? But tax, tax wise, it's no different, someone said it was different, it's not different. You were fully taxed for the expense. The only difference is retirement, okay? Those people aren't being reimbursed. The reason the line item for reimbursement is still there is there are multitudes of people in the district who reimbursed for mileage, who do, did not, do not have it as an allowance, so that's why it's.
So, they put in for IRS guidelines, fifty-seven and a half cents.
That's correct, we have to reimburse a lot of different people who travel around the district. So, that, so the line item is a totally, the line item is not totally used for the expense allowances, it was also used for other reimbursements.
I, I get that, and I respect that.
Thank you.
But the question I have is, well, the question I have is, you said at one moment, you said you didn't, you don't have privacy into the contracts with those individuals. So, you can't really be sure that they're not getting reimbursed, those particular individuals.
I am sure those individuals don't get reimbursed this year. I don't know what their future reimbursement arrangements are, I only know what mine is.
Why don't we just?
So, so if next year they're reimbursed, then it's a retroactive pay increase. If they are reimb, if they're not reimbursed, there's not an increase.
I believe, I believe most of, all the contracts with that's an issue are up for renegotiation, so it can be addressed.
Okay.
I mean, we can't negotiate, we can't set this, we can't set the parameters for contracts that haven't been negotiated yet.
I'm, I'm with you, I, I'm not even going there on that. I'm just asking them about the, the separate line item.
That's all I'm saying, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, is all I'm saying. But I know this year they're not being reimbursed. I know I will be reimbursed for the balance of my contract, that's what I agreed to, okay?
I just want to get back to the original issue.
I'm trying to understand why we can't move on, what's the question?
All right, so I had questions about that level of percent. When my recollection was that we said that non-union positions would realize a two percent increase unless last year they recognized more than two percent because of the roll in of their vehicle allowance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I will assure you this, I mean, all that I can involve in, I will assure you that the budget is built with no more than a two percent increase on individual salaries, say the superintendent salaries we discussed earlier, going forward. So, the budget numbers that are presented to you, I understand some of the individual line items have larger amounts, okay? But those are some of the reasons, I just tried to explain this one, why that's the reason, okay?
But I think you guys aren't talking apples and apples.
No, no, no.
Because one is a benefit, and now one is a salary.
Well, I'm just saying that there are a group of people that got over two percent. One person got five point eight percent, four point zero eight. The facilities director, because it was rolled in to his, so they got the two percent plus the roll in.
Right.
And everybody else got two percent.
Right.
And it's, I, I just raised the issue because.
Not everybody got two percent.
Yes, but how can you?
Pretty much everybody.
How can you change the contracts for certain individuals?
Let me see, two percent, two percent, let me see.
Because they agreed to.
Somebody got one point one percent.
Nobody, there was no contract negotiation to let administration increase other people's benefits.
But you asked the question, how do you change a contract, who's the person who has the contract agreed to?
That's a good point.
That's the answer to the question.
If an individual wants to change a contract, they can.
With agreement of the management.
Kathy.
I had with the personnel subcommittee asked for this information last year relative to non-union contracts and the benefits.
Right.
And so, based on that, we were able to figure the raises that they received from FY twelve through FY sixteen.
Yeah.
Only one person received less than two percent.
Okay.
And that person got one point one one percent.
Okay.
And then, there was the other group of people who got their two percent.
Yeah.
And then, when their vehicle allowance was rolled in.
Yeah.
Um, without the agreement of the school committee, then these folks recognized more than two percent.
Yes.
So, I think what I would like to put on the table is that these folks don't get a raise this year, and anybody else get two percent. These are significant increases, it increased their, what they got last year increased their base. So, their two percent would continue to give them a significant increase.
And that's fine, I guess, I, I have no comment on it. The only comment I would make is just a clarification, that you, what you said is correct, okay? With the exception is, their total compensation only increased whatever their quota was, okay? That's all I'm saying about it. I don't wanna say they're only 2%, but there may have been different ones. So you have the numbers in front of you, I don't, okay? But, so yes, the people who got their, who got their car allowances, for lack of better term, rolled into their salaries, did get them to their base, okay? I concur with that, okay? And that's fine. And if you wanna make the suggestion you did, that's your prerogative. The only thing I wanna make clear to everybody is those people's total compensation, the cash in their paycheck, did not change any more than anybody else's, okay? So when they got rolled, when they got rolled in, it did, they are already being paid that money.
But it's part of their base salary that influences future raises.
That's correct.
Where the other people just got their 2%.
That's correct.
Except for that poor person who got 1.11%.
But, and again, just to make... I hesitate to do this, but it doesn't... But, let's take...
So Kathy has...
Wait, let George finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, George.
I'm trying to find my words.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
So, if you give them a 0% raise, okay? Is that, that's what you suggested, right?
Yes, for this year.
Yeah, right, FY17. If you give them a 0% raise, okay? That's fine. But just remember, the increase on their base would only be about $40, like $25, whatever. So I'm just saying. So they ask, so yes, they have a bigger base a year, but you give them zero, which is your prerogative, they are taking, it's a relatively... They're not getting a raise. And they didn't get, and they didn't really get a double raise last year. They got a double raise in their base, they didn't get a double raise in their pocket, okay? That's the only clarification.
But the other issue for me is that the budget said everybody got 2%.
I understand.
And this is a, for me, it's credibility with the community, it's the optics, it's transparency.
The budget last year didn't say they got 2%.
Yes, it did.
When, when, when we're sitting at... When we're sitting at the town meeting and we're explaining this...
So me out there, me and her?
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, sorry, Kath, thanks for correcting me.
So, in my opinion, I don't think it's those people's fault. And I don't think that it got rolled in, but if the actual increase to them is just a small number and, you know, overall, that I don't understand why we would, you know, penalize them for that. That's my opinion.
I don't think someone who's making $120,000 a year is being penalized. I mean, these are not people making money away.
So I have my opinion and I stated it.
Yeah, no, I know that.
That's how I feel. I think what you said is penalizing them for something that I don't think was their doing.
Well, the other piece for me was the interaction with the school committee and it's not being done above board. And I think it's our credibility, and I get it, Kath.
Again, let me finish.
Yep.
Again, I don't think it was their interaction with the school committee that we're questioning.
No?
Right. That's a good point.
And I don't need to be put in the role of advocate of those people's increases. I'm just simply trying to explain what...
No, I understand.
Okay.
I am advocating.
I have kind of an illustrative comment. Suppose you make $100,000 and you had $5,000 in the travel. So your total pay in two buckets was 105,000. Last year, that 100, that extra five got rolled into your salary.
Mm-hmm.
And so you, now you're gonna boost, say you boosted it by 2%. So instead of just a flat $2,000 increase, you're getting slightly more than that. 2% of the extra $5,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's really very, not that much. I mean, two, think about, what, 2% of 5,000?
But I think what Kathy's saying is philosophically...
I understand.
Philosophically, we have things in place.
I understand.
And there's this acting outside of the norm. There's no structure, so there's no... I understand what you're saying. And I actually happen to agree with you on it because I think it's unfair that the people who didn't have travel allowances now don't have an artificially inflated base on which benefits are structured and in future increases are structured. And you can say it's only 50 bucks this year, but then two years, three years, four years, and steps and all that other... Well, that's not steps, but that's why I hear what you're saying. We have a bucket of money, it's 2% across the board. It can fluctuate within that. And some folks have received considerably more than the 2%. And that's not fair to the people that didn't have it.
It's not like the vehicle allowances were all the same.
No!
That's correct.
So on the average, you could correct that problem that you described going forward by giving the people the category that Kathy's proposing zero for, give them a 1.9% as opposed to a 2.0%. And then you're gonna have, then it's the same. Then you've wiped out the raise going forward. You've wiped out the impact of the car allowance going forward, the raise part of the car allowance going forward.
Yeah, not to a person who is getting $5,000 in the car allowance.
Not to that person, that's correct. I don't think anybody was in that position.
Oh, you want me to give you the list?
Probably helpful if you gave me, I don't have it.
Oh, yeah, can you send him the list?
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, so where did we land on this?
I just, I just wanna know what our recommendation is for salary increases, and I wanted to raise this as an issue.
It's 2%. And clearly Kathy and Mark have spoken.
Are there any exceptions to that?
Well, I would say, in a normal world, when things weren't secretly rolled in, that it's the superintendent's job to decide, I have a high performer here. If they're not in the union, they might get a little more than two in someone else who's not a high performer. I mean, that's how it works in the corporate world. So I don't know how you do what you do. Is it just a flat, everybody gets two?
It varies from district to district. I've been in districts where the superintendent has X amount of dollars and the X, and they can distribute it to the administrative team based on their evaluations in any way. Or I've been in districts where it's a... Usually their contract is set for three years and the increase is built into the contract every, each year.
So let's step back for a second. Because we keep throwing around 2%. I think historically, the reason we throw around the 2% is because that's what was given to the union and it was just easy to apply that 2% to the non-union folks. So I'm gonna question the 2%. Why is it 2%?
Just to recommend the budget level, I agree with pretty much your description of what you said is correct. The superintendent should probably make a decision on individual basis, that's what I feel of individual contracts. But it's been averaged around 2%. So I think the guidance we're looking for, and I think it's, like, thank you for bringing it up in this instance, I think it's good to get a resolve to get the budget. What number do you want us to carry? We can carry any number you want.
Right.
Okay, so that's a question we can answer.
These are not actual raises. These are only the numbers we're carrying for budgetary purposes. The raises will be awarded through some process, through the superintendent, to the individual administrators, to the school committee.
So I guess the question I would, I would have is, I would wanna see, what's 2% of the total, projected total salary bucket? And then what's 1.5%? And we can have a discussion.
About $80,000, I believe.
This is of the administrative end of the world.
Yes.
All the principals and...
So I think...
Somewhere in that area, that's just my ballpark of criteria.
So I think the question is not 2%, a little more than 2%. I think the question is, where do we feel comfortable? Neil?
I would make a recommendation that we think somehow about how to reconcile this. And here's... In my mind, this also destabilizes the pay structure. Because we bring somebody into the district and now we've established a new level that this particular, this particular person leaves, there's now, I mean, they're making X number of dollars. Now we've gotta pay that person X number of dollars, which we're now paying to go in travel allowance, et cetera. The travel allowance is something separate. If it was meant to be part of the salary, it would've been the salary. And now it's, it's sort of changed the game a little bit. And to Kathy's point, I absolutely agree. It's not the fault of the individuals that are involved. But I think we need to think about how somehow, how to bring this back into alignment to where it, where it should be. So we don't have this artificial inflation. So we don't have this legacy of benefits that we're paying out. And how can we do that?
So...
And you don't have a pay structure in your...
No, and that's another issue.
Exactly.
No, we don't.
So it now becomes...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And so it's, it's sort of, it now sets some new standards for us as a district moving forward. And I'm just thinking, is there a way, and I'm throwing it out there, that we can unwind this? Without it hurting...
What's your recommendation?
Without it hurting the individuals.
Not at this point.
I'm sorry, I was looking at Kathy's documents. I can answer the question for this.
Establishing an administrative pay structure.
Yeah, I mean, we never had one since I've been here. I don't know in your area. I haven't seen schools with them in here.
Yeah.
The ones I've dealt with have not had them. You know, sometimes it is not. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying I haven't experienced it.
That way, when you have a new person coming in, you're not sitting there going, well, what do I wanna really pay you? You go by the structure.
Right.
You're coming in as an entry level. You have no experience, this is what we pay. There's no, you know...
We do it with the unions, why aren't we doing it with the executives?
There's a range.
Well, that was the, the issue with a lot of the positions that were added. There was no, there was no way to see what the, what data was presented for consideration to set the salary levels for a lot of...
And I think it would help your future administrator say, and be open and upfront and say, this is, this is the range. And when you advertise it for a job,
Exactly.
It's right there.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I mean, in building the budget, how much was put in for non-union raises?
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's the number we're talking about. The 2% we're talking about is only a recommendation. That's what was put into the budget. And I think, I can't put it together right this second, but from my recollection, it's around $80,000, okay? So that's the delta. So if you went to 1.5, it would be around $60,000. You went to 2.5, it would be $100,000.
So George, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I don't wanna harm anyone and their raises. I don't wanna do that. But we are working really hard to see where there might be... I mean, you've found redundancies, you know, you guys have found other areas. At this point, do we wanna look at maybe not fully funding a 2% increase for... And I'm not saying that to harm anyone.
That's a fair, I'm saying that's a fair, that's a fair question.
I think we need to have the discussion.
All right, I agree. It'd be helpful for budgeting, so we know.
What do you guys think?
And you didn't have this discussion back?
No, it was always, we were told what it was.
I think that's...
No, it's not, because I remember having the conversation.
So you're dealing with basically post-traumatic angst.
I've gathered that, Mark.
What do you guys think about an appropriate level of increase for non-union?
So I have to say right off the bat, it depends on what you're thinking about for the union world as well.
Well, what is the union getting this year? You know that.
Why, why does it have to be tied to the union?
What is it?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. And see, I don't buy that argument that what the union gets, the executives get.
No, I'm not saying they have to, but it could be, you have a particular strategy for the union world and you'd like to demonstrate you're gonna implement it with them because you did it to the administration. And so I think you need to think holistically about the entire topic.
Okay, well, that's not what we're doing right now.
I understand.
We are at the 11th hour. It's, for God's sakes, it's 11 o'clock, 11:59. What's your opinion? Make, you're like my 16-year-old son. You gotta make a decision.
I'm content to have 2% in the budget and what we do about it is a completely separate decision.
I'm content to have 2% in the budget and what we do about it...
What we actually, what we actually recommend that the superintendent do to do with his administrative staff, future superintendent, I think that's a different, separate conversation. I think it's wise for us to maintain our current administrative staff with a top-to-living increase.
That's the good point.
I'm saying, I'm saying there's a, there's a fund and then there's the actual implementation of what you do about the fund.
Yeah, but that's up to Kurt.
But I would also argue, I think it's very hard for me at this point to come in and say, oh, you get one, you get 1.5. I'm not in that position for that.
So then do it across the board.
That's why you need to get them.
Neil?
That's why you need to get them.
Come on, Neil. Dear Jesus.
I, I think you, in my opinion, I think you hit that on the head. And I don't think this is something we can actually take care of this year.
No.
So leave it at two.
That's, that's my take. Because I think all we're doing is putting ripples in the water.
So you're leaving two, you're leaving two. What do you, I mean, we have to, I mean, there's, there's all this little chitty chatter about it. So guys, have an opinion and let's move on with it. What's your opinion?
My opinion's two.
Two, thank you.
And have, and maybe you...
Put together a scale, which is what we should have.
That's right.
Neil, or Nicole, I just looked at you and called you Neil.
Thanks.
What do you, what's your thought? I'm only asking for one.[1369.74] I'm only asking for one.
Um, at this late hour, two.
All right. Kathy?
Two. I feel strongly about the people who got both.
I do, too.
Let's like him.
Lynn, speak.
Uh, I'm leaning towards one.
All right, Lynn's leaning towards one. I, I'm okay with two, but I don't think it's fair that the other people got it, whatever. So, it looks like the majority of us are saying two.
For the record, seventy thousand, not eighty thousand.
All right, for the record, okay, we'll take that for the record. By the way, I just wanna introduce one more thing, the SRO, um.
Yeah, that's the second, we can write that next week.
Yeah, I put it down.
You got it in there?
Twenty thousand, we'll put it in for next week.
When we bring the reorg movies back this week, we can make the SRO.
Thank you. I, I wanted, I was afraid that got lost.
No, no.
Okay. All right, guys, we are going to keep moving, and we're almost there, and does anyone have any burning budget issues? Because I think you guys covered the ones that I had.
I have one, which I've communicated to both you and Kurt.
Yes.
I would like to be able to figure out, or have enough information to figure out how we're doing versus recurring and non-recurring money that comes in and out of revolving funds.
So, is Masbo gonna look at that for us?
It doesn't need to be answered now, but I, I would like to, you know.
I have, I pretty much have the information, I just need to put some.
Great, so that's, that satisfies me.
Okay. By the way, Kurt, for the Masbo.
Yes.
What were they given as a charge?
Your listing? I gave them your whole listing, and they said they could probably handle all of two of them.
Oh, wow, I thought they were only gonna do three.
But then they're losing one of the most.
Yeah, which two?
I have to, it's, it doesn't really get into, delving into accounts and stuff.
Oh, was it AP?
It was account payable, and there was one of, I'd have to go back.
Okay.
Or accounts payable and purchase orders, so.
There was only two out of it.
Okay.
They said they'll be able to hit everything else.
That's impressive, really shocking, okay. All right, are we done with that? Um, I'm gonna swap out a couple of things, so just, let's talk about next week, we are down to the wire, and you know what? I know we all want more time, I want more time, um, but we don't have the time because we have to meet the March fifteenth commitment, which means we only have two meetings left. Next Wednesday is our budget hearing.
No, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, the third?
It's Thursday.
Okay, so, is the budget hearing? My question, so, at the budget hearing, holy cow, we, well, the administration presents.
The budget.
The budget.
Yeah.
People are gonna be here from our towns, they're probably gonna have questions. We're gonna have to listen to what their questions are. The question I have for you is, what more do we need, do you want to get done, do you need to get done, in order to feel comfortable with where this budget is at?
Well, we talked about the, um, budget representation of Kurt's proposals.
Right.
The Swahili.
Yes, you're gonna give us that.
Um, this is gonna be updated?
Yes.
With page numbers?
Not by next week.
No, no, just as long as the finished product is.
George, you know, with regard to the page numbers, I know you said that, because you have different programs.
Yeah.
Send it to me and I'll help you.
No, we, I, I, I'm not worried, I can even write them in before we copy it, that's not a problem. But, the point is, I mean, it's, it could reduce that budget, but this book had to be updated, that's the thing, so it's not, it's not gonna happen by next week.
Well, we can't present the budget without a budget book, right?
George, what helps you need to get it done by next week?
I have to look at it, really, I don't, I guess, you, I mean, the only thing that's outdated is like the narratives and stuff like that, I mean, so, I guess I could just add an additional narrative section, which talks about the changes we made since, since the, uh.
Why wouldn't you just change the narratives that are there? Why do you have to add, you don't have to add more, just change, just edit what's already there, right?
Well.
No?
It'd be easier to add, actually, it makes it a little bit less continuous maybe, but, I mean, this is the first year we've done this, so it's, it's, it's not in the most, it's not in the most editable format.
All right, so I'm gonna tell you something, I am going to come over your house this weekend and help you edit this.
I'll be on the phone.
And I'm gonna tell you why, George. This is incredibly valuable, but if you give us this, and then you give, wait a minute, if you give us this, and then you give us something on top of it that's not integrated?
No, it will be integrated.
I'd be like, ah.
No, it will be integrated, it will just, it'll be the last, it'll be just the next chapter, like as long as you read books, you know, you add a chapter if something else happens. So, we'll just add a chapter, this is the proposed budget, this is the recommended budget, so the last chapter we have is the proposed budget, we'll just add a chapter called the recommended budget.
Oh, for a narrative?
Yeah, because if you look at the book.
No, I don't think you need to do that.
Well, let's just go through it for a second, I know it's late, okay? But if you look at the, at the.
No offense, but we have ten minutes, go ahead.
Okay. So, if you look at the way, without page numbers, this was presented, okay?
Yeah.
It starts out with a budget review.
Yeah.
We don't wanna really change that much, I mean, there are a couple of small changes in that, which we can put in the dent of that, says what the changes are, and then put the final budget review recommendation.
Change the narrative, I don't know why we wouldn't just change the narrative, I'm confused. Neil, am I losing it?
I don't know, I lost it a couple hours ago, sorry.
Kurt, am I wrong, I just, am I thinking wrong?
Because it's not the way the book's built, though, Lorraine. Because I, because I started out with last year's budget, and then showed the whole requested budget, then I showed the requested budget to the proposed budget, I showed every step. So, if I, you want me to cut all the steps and just show the recommended budget only? Then it's a whole new book, which I could do, but I mean.
I mean, Lorraine, this is basically the beta that we're looking at here, the cake is baked, you know what I mean? And.
I'm not looking at replacing.
No, but ideally, if I, if I understand Dr. Bates, the way that this works is, it becomes a plug-and-play sort of scenario, where you're just plugging and playing the narrative each, but it's, it is set up, so you've got a template that's set up, and then you, and that's not necessarily the way that we're doing this, but.
I'll replace this whole section.
I, I'm talking about this.
I know, but this.
What am I missing?
But why?
Why are you not, why are you not helping me?
You know what, you know what, I'll, I'll.
What I'm asking for?
Lorraine, I can, I can fix those sections easy enough, that's not a problem, okay?
Yeah, I just want, this is, here's the thing.
But it doesn't, it's not going to conform with all the narratives, I don't think, that's the only thing, I have to look through it. I, I, I understand your point, I.
What, what, so here, wait, just let me, let me talk it through, right?
Yep.
I'm, I'm a resident of one of our three towns, and I picked this up and go, whoa, that's really fancy. I'm gonna read the budget revenue section, and now, now I know what charter school reimbursement is, now, and you know what? If I weren't on school committee, I'm admitting it, I probably wouldn't read the details.
I, I'll, I'll handle that.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, I'll do that, okay? But while I'm asking you about, no, I'll do that, it's fine.
No, because if I'm being unrealistic, tell me.
No, no, you're not unrealistic, it's fine, I can do that. If you go to budget expenditures, that's where it gets a little bit more complicated, okay?
Yeah.
Because in a budget expenditure.
Oh, because you have the nar, right.
Because I have the narrative, it starts with the requested budget, which everybody wanted to see for Trent, then I went to the requested budget to the proposed budget, and I showed you the steps that got us to the proposed budget, which we had a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Now, I would just, I would just propose adding, it says, well, no, at the end of it, I think I would add a chapter there, and say, proposed budget to the recommended budget, to show the work you did. I showed the work we did to get from the asked budget to the recommended budget, I'll put in a new couple pages that talks about the work you did to get from the proposed budget to the recommended budget. But, but, is the budget we're at right now, after tonight's change, the recommended budget? It's not. So, I don't, you know, that's the other problem. Because we still have that other, because you gotta make, you're gonna adjust, if you do the reorg, right, that's gonna be some adjustment, right? And you're gonna adjust for the SRO, those haven't been voted yet.
So, what are we gonna look at next week?
Why do we have to vote the SRO separate?
We don't, you can vote it now, but you know what it is?
Can't it be part of the bo, budget?
You wanna vote it, sure.
I mean, why would, do you guys wanna vote the SRO separate? No!
It's not.
No, the reduction, right now, we're carrying sixty-two thousand, you gotta down to what?
Forty-something.
You vote it when we vote the whole darn budget, right?
Well, okay, so, I guess that's where I'm confused.
Because they didn't vote these things, they just gave you.
Right!
But I guess that's what I'm confused about, do you want me, what changes do you want me to make?
Well, you're implementing yours.
Yeah.
Yes, that, and I've gotta get, we're gonna sit down and go over the.
Right, but so you want me to, do you want me to create a budget book with the changes from the reorg in the budget book before you guys vote it?
I'm not talking about that yet, so, you have, well, you have your whole thing, and we have to go, you have to.
Yeah.
So, that has to happen next week.
Right.
All right, so how are we gonna do this?
Well, could we, I hate to make this suggestion, but what?
You wanna meet over the weekend, don't you?
Yes, I do.
I know you do.
I'm gonna have all the food out, and we're gonna work on it, but, uh, no, could we, uh, I know this probably not what you wanna do, but you have the budget hearing advertised for next Wednesday night?
Yes.
Nothing says you can't open it, and then adjourn it for a week, then we can spend next Wednesday night working on the final details, and then have the final budget proposed for the following week.
Yeah, but then we're not giving anybody an opportunity to weigh in on it, and it looks like we're.
Sure, before you vote.
Huh?
Before you vote, you present your budget, you tell them what they are, if they have suggestions, you guys can deliberate and consider the suggestions. So, you finish the budget work next week, the third, and the tenth, you present the budget, you hear what people have to say, and I guess you wanna give them a week, it's a different story, but you don't have a, you don't really have a final project to produce next week for them.
So, what if, how about alternatively, what if we have a hearing, and we know our budget is still gonna be amended, but we actually meet our obligation for a hearing, and we are still in the middle of our budget process, and it's fine to amend it post-hearing? You know, I mean, part of why we're having a hearing a week before the end of it all.
It's to get in.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I want the week between, right.
And so, it's, yeah, but. But it's okay if we still know we have to amend it.
So, you don't have to print a hundred copies of this book, you just need a few, and on the screen.
Right.
And maybe George is saying, are you close enough to where you believe we walk out of here this, this, tonight, and George has gotta make some adjustments, and Kurt's?
Well, right now, you have the chart of where you are right now, minus Lorraine's twenty thousand dollars for the SRO.
Which is what, four, three, seven?
I don't know, I have it on my screen here, but like, in front of me, uh, let's see.
Say?
Four, three, four, three.
Four, three, four.
Yeah.
Four point three five.
Four, three, five, okay.
Minus the twenty.
Minus the twenty, which will be, in a couple of places.
So, why go through all the changes? Why not just put out a simple book as it is, and then a simple supplemental, here's what we're, here's what we're looking at for changes right now, or modifications.
Yeah, it's the supplemental, supplement this for now.
This is what we're discussing, and we're still hashing it out, these are, and we'll still get feedback, including what we're discussing, we're gonna get feedback on, so it still captures everything we have to this point.
Oh, we're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna have more discussion at the budget, it's not like we're gonna have a budget hearing that's the end of it.
I don't think that extra work, I don't think needs to be done at this, maybe I'm wrong, I could.
So, it's really Kurt stuff.
Right.
But let's just produce a supplemental, like Neil said, it's still what we got now, then we, after it's all voted, we can put it all together and send out the whole work.
As final, right.
Kurt, what do you want, what do you got?
No, I was just saying, a budget book that I've always, is usually the final document. It doesn't have to show all the work that you went through it. Again, this is like a workbook that you're doing.
Right.
You wanna, your final, is, is the final budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't wanna produce a book if we.
Right, so we don't really need to make those changes.
I thought that was what you were doing at my house this weekend.
Not until the budget's approved.
Okay, well, I thought that's what we were doing at my house this weekend, that's why I was.
No, I'm hoping you rewrite the narrative this weekend.
Probably you're saying you just have a date, right?
I'm married.
Almost.
Happily. Um, so, next week, we'll have the budget hearing we need to meet.
Yep.
Okay, and we're gonna discuss the merits of, um, George's, Kurt's recommendations.
Yep.
Guys, come prepared to have that discussion, so we can do, don't move on.
So, for the purposes of publicity, what will we, what will we put out, so that people know what's being discussed?
Oh, we're gonna, oh.
We'll create this, we'll create this stuff, we'll, we'll create.
It's like publicity, actually.